All right, guys. Hello. Welcome. I've got four different clocks. I say four different times. My phone says six oh one, so I'm going for the average of the clocks in the room. Um, just want to welcome everyone. This Wednesday, this cold Wednesday, uh, January twenty second, twenty twenty five. It is approximately six o'clock. Uh, remind everybody in the room to please silence our cell phones. So that we can respect one another's time and each person's thinking. I ask for your patience and understanding, and it's appreciated as council deliberates on various agenda items. Um, just for your information, as we get started on this meeting, there is open public comment time. And signups are encouraged. Uh, the sheet is out the front here, and so if anybody's here would like to sign up for um, open public comment. We do not have a specific public hearing on this meeting agenda, but those all have a separate signups. I'd like to acknowledge the staff work uh, that's done in preparation for this meeting. Their insights are invaluable to each topic of town business. And appreciate our town manager, Ms. Natasha Tucker, and our council manager for our government. Um, our town manager handles the daily operations and department administration. While town council provides direction and authorizes policy in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the Town Charter. While each council member has ultimate responsibility to contribute and vote distinctly. The council does work as a body duly elected to serve responsibly and ethically the citizens of Colonial Beach. Participation of each member contributes to effective leadership. Collaboration is key to productivity and local government. Let's engage in constructive discussion tonight, remain open to different perspectives, and work together for effective resolutions. Finally, I remind us that the meetings of the town council are formal proceedings and are recorded. With that, I call the meeting to order of the town council. Please join me um, for a moment of silence, and I'd like to recognize in this moment of silence the passing of Gary Seber. A former council member, a public servant for twelve years. His wife served on school board, his daughter on school board as well. Gary um, was a beloved member of our community and contributed not just to massive projects like the high school being built on town contributions and donations. But even to the littlest things like counting quarters from the pay stations around town before we went electronic. He would sit on the front porch with his family and um, and count quarters. I'm glad we don't have to count the quarters anymore, but um, Gary will be uh, deeply missed in this community. And so I'd like to recognize him and thank him for his service and um, just in uh, memory of him. So please join me in the moment of silence. Thank you. All right, we're off to a great start. We've been forward our roll call of members. All members are present tonight and welcome to our new members. This is their first formal meeting. Um, additions to the agenda, I don't have anything to add. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second? Okay, all in favor of the agenda? Got it. All right. Any needs? All right. Consent agenda, this is the approval of the November twentieth uh, meeting minutes. Obviously, uh, three new council members are here with us tonight. So um, they uh, generally practice would be abstained um, from the meeting minutes since you were on council time. But as long as there's four of us, we can approve the meeting minutes so they get published. Okay, move. Is there a second? Okay, and any discussion?
Yeah, there was just um, one thing in there. I don't have the minutes in front of me and I can't remember exactly, but there were, I think there was two votes. And there was a repeat from the first um, this sentence about the vote into the second one. I'll let Heather know what it is, but um, it's just a clarification. So if I can point it out to her, if there's no objection, I'd like her at least fix that because it wasn't accurate.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll fix it. There were errors. Any other comments? Okay, then all in favor of approval of the consent agenda? All right, councilor liaison and commissioner reports. We're gonna be a little short on this one today till we get further into our agenda, but we'll go with who we got. Um, Mr. Wood?
Yeah, it's gonna be relatively short.
Can you talk into your mic, Mr. Wood?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
It has to be like right in front of her. And then you turn away.
I'm trying to find a helicopter here, guys. Uh, okay, so anyway, um, it's gonna be short and sweet. Uh, John is going to be giving uh, the report from Bowdoin. I just wanted to uh, thank Public Works for outstanding work clearing roads. That's just and that's all I got for you today.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, just uh, a planning commission I attended on the ninth. Uh, they did quite a bit of business, their first meeting of the year. Um, they nominated a chair, actually two people were nominated, Vicki Luna and Bailey Thompson. And there was a tie vote, three to three. Um, so uh, what ended up happening because um, the ruling from the town attorney and the zoning administrator was that the zoning administrator should take over the meeting until um, somebody was appointed as the chair. Um, so she ran the rest of the meeting. Um, and Ms. Luna left early due to illness. Um, their minutes were approved. Um, let's see, uh, public input, uh, Mr. Christensen, who happens to also be on board, got up and spoke about sidewalks and raised several concerns about their neglect over the years and um, issues that need to be addressed um, in the planning phase. Uh, Mr. Kelly uh, sent in a letter and um, mentioned uh, let's see, improvements still need to be made for the CIP. Um, this is, this is about the CIP hearing. Uh, he mentioned Dwyer Avenue extension, two million dollars, it's expensive. The town's portion that benefited twelve homes at three hundred fifty thousand each. Uh, he said we needed more um, descriptions under the CIP line items, including uh, examples like rip rap. He had a question about the miss uh, municipal uh, study, basically the municipal center uh, replacement of of see sewer replacement, and he also mentioned I and I should, there should be more detail about that. Uh, Mr. Knuckle sent in something about CIP. Um, said there needed to be more adequate descriptions, um, had some concerns over the funding. And also what the needs versus uh, what were, let's see here, uh, the needs versus um, what was listed because there's really no priorities on there. Said we didn't need to reinvent the wheel. There's a lot of good examples from other localities. So once um, the council gets this, we'll be addressing it soon. It's just some comments that might be helpful for us. Uh, Mr. Long had some comments about the CIP and format issues. He asked about the utility fund, which is something I've raised several times, you know, as far as how do we pay for a trash truck? Should it really be in the CIP or should it be in the utility fund that we create for trash? Questions about the meters, do we need the meters if, and the communication system for the meters if we're not gonna install them or replace the ones that are, are dead. Um, Mr. Howell also talked about the CIP since he's their liaison and he mentioned how they spent hours when I'm talking to each department. Mr. Hutchinson said we needed more detail, especially more information about finance. Uh, how we're gonna finance all the different items on the CIP. And also justifications for missing. Mr. Christiansen questioned the trash truck. Um, Ms. Curts said there should be a list of priority numbers, like which, what's the most priority over others. Let's see. Uh, they mentioned ten thousand, the, for the benefit of the planning commission, it was mentioned that the items that are for technology are ten thousand limit, so ten thousand or more, and then also uh, fifty thousand for other items. So some good for us to note as we get into the process. Um, the final vote to pass it was five to zero, uh, within Ms. Luna being absent. Um, the board of zoning appeals variants and provisions, that's something that was discussed. Uh, it was stated that it is mainly for clarification. There wasn't a whole lot of real change. Uh, the vote was five to zero to pass that. The work plan, they passed their work plan five to zero, and then they also voted to have a FARC hearing. For ratio, I'm not sure, but many of you may remember recently where we had a meeting, special meeting about the FARC. And so they finally passed it and it's gonna be on the thirteenth. And this will be an open discussion and the vote was five to zero to hold that meeting. And that's it for planning commission.
Thank you. And Mr. Allison, I may just skip over here because we were doing commission reports. If you'd like to, I'd like to give you an opportunity if you wanna say anything. Just pass. Okay. Same with you, Lisa? Okay, would you like the same?
Um, just again, kudos to Public Works and taking care of the roads with all the snow. Um, I was really greatly impressed that I was actually able to go out um, way before I was able to get back to work and happy to be here.
Thank you. Mr. Allison?
Uh, so my report will be super short as well. Um, we have our second quarter financial report that's gonna be given by our director of finance. Uh, then we also have the comprehensive annual audit report um, later on in the evening. So it's all for me.
Okay, and I'll give a quick update. The um, uh, the commro meeting, the group of military leadership that meets with the um, low regional localities. That meeting was canceled due to the snow, so I don't have an update from that. But the EDC did meet and there were some really encouraging statistics from the Chamber of Commerce on visitation to their website, on um, outlook for this upcoming tour season and um, a lot of exciting information. I think the EDC is working to compile that um, along with some data Main Street needs. And we'll be presenting that in a monthly fashion um, hopefully moving forward. Uh, they also uh, discussed our bylaws, um, updates on some new businesses. We had the ribbon cutting for the Mindful Mermaid, which is a yoga, Pilates and art studio in the town of Colonial Beach. If you haven't checked it out, I encourage you to go. Um, it's on Colonial Avenue, uh, right across the street from Lenny's. Um, and some other new business changes that are happening. Oh, Pier nine oh nine, we await their ribbon cutting. And Fire Escape is changing hands to uh, forgot the name of the new establishment, but it's Italian. It's Italian, an Italian eatery? No, not Lena. Beautiful. And um, the Ice House will be celebrating their third anniversary um, this coming weekend, and they have a new food menu as well. That was greatly timed. Look at that. Next up is our town manager update. Ms. Tucker, take it away.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Council members, welcome. Uh, the newly elected council members, uh, members in the audience, uh, welcome. We will uh, begin our town man, my town manager update with the second quarter financial report um, from our finance director, Lisa Oaks. To be followed by the fourth quarter public safety report, uh, Chief Parsons. And then uh, an update from John Simmons from in Bowdoin on the sewer plant update. After which I will um, update on a few um, items.
Good evening. Uh, this is the second quarter fiscal twenty five financial report. And we're gonna start off with the general fund. Um, this slide shows revenue and expenditures uh, budgeted, uh, what was spent in the second quarter and the year to date. Um, and we at this point, um, have collected fifty-three percent of our projected budget. And have only spent forty-six percent of our budget. So we are right on track. And the next slide shows the breakdown of where the revenue came from and where the expenditures happened. Um, you can see the property taxes, uh, that was the um, the, uh, the December um, uh, real estate and personal property made up, uh, the bulk of that uh, number, the three million. Moving on to the sewer fund, again, your revenue expenditures that were budgeted your second quarter and your year to date. Um, so far we are at forty-four percent on revenue collection. And we have spent fifty percent of our budget uh, in the sewer. And we are a little bit behind on revenue collection there. And then the next slide shows your breakdown. Um, you say our biggest expenditures have been in the wastewater treatment plant. Um, due to all of the upgrades and repairs we've been making onto the water. Our water fund, our budgeted second quarter and year to dates. Um, we are at a forty-five percent collection on revenue and we have spent fifty-eight percent uh, our budget. We are a little shy on our revenue. And again, there's the breakdown. And then our last slide is our ARPA fund update. And this shows how much we received in the ARPA funds, the expenditures for each fiscal year. Uh, what we have remaining. And the last two items, we have requested reimbursement um, for the CDA project. In the amount of two point five million dollars, and we've requested reimbursement um, for the rezilience plan development that I think we were hearing about tonight. Um, that grant was a hundred, three thousand five hundred dollars. And if we have any questions, I'll take this now.
Any questions? Okay, give them a pardon?
I just wanted to know, can we make this available online or will it be? Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Wood?
Something real quick too. Can you hear me? It's just better. Uh, is it possible to just stipulate that any of the slides that we have at the, the meetings are available publicly? I think they are for the most part anyway, aren't they not? Just kind of like
If you go on to the website and go under town council, it says TC reports and presentations. Right. And so usually the Thursday or the Friday after the meeting, everything's uploaded to that page.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Chief Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Keep going. Uh, that, uh, the slide currently on the screen is our mission statement for the police department. Change that. Thank you. And this is our current uh, organizational chart or structure, uh, where we have uh, two current vacancies, uh, one in uh, the officer, an officer position and then also one in our administratively ten position. And we are currently in the process of, of attempting to fill those positions. Uh, so the quarterly report uh, for the, the fourth quarter of twenty twenty four. Uh, we had a total service calls of three thousand two hundred and forty-nine for the quarter. Uh, so we're averaging about eleven hundred uh, calls uh, month. Uh, we had completed ninety-one reports, completed uh, conducted five hundred and eighty-four traffic stops, uh, investigated seven traffic collisions. Um, and made a hundred and five arrests. And just to clarify that, that does not technically include just physical arrests. That includes uh, any summons that are issued for criminal conduct. So it's not uh, just physical arrests. Next slide, please. Uh, this slide shows uh, the offenses uh, during the uh, fourth quarter. Uh, moving from left to right, uh, the first uh, number would be for aggravated assault, then simple assault. Shoplifting, uh, other larcenies or other thefts, uh, drug and narcotics violations, weapons law. Um, the large column there is for driving women to the influence, uh, and finally, uh, family offenses. The next slide shows uh, the arrests totals. It does not show all the, the, uh, all the total or all the arrests, just some of the more of the main ones. Uh, but again, it does not include uh, just physical arrests, but also includes uh, issuing summons for uh, criminal conduct. Uh, it also includes arrests that it, that occurred for events that occurred in prior quarters. So these are just the arrests that were made uh, during this quarter. Uh, the first uh, first uh, statistic there is for simple assaults, shopliftings, uh, motor vehicles, uh, thefts. Uh, uh, false pretenses or frauds, um, destruction of property. Uh, the large column there is for drugs and narcotics violations. Uh, the next one uh, is for drug equipment and last is for uh, weapons law violations. This slide shows uh, offense trends. Um, and if you notice that um, we, we're moving into a, a scenario where we're, we've kind of evened out uh, the, the daily statistics for arrests or for offenses, excuse me. Um, and where we used to have uh, some spikes. Um, so now we're basically stable all the way across the work week. Um, and then we have a, a uptick on Saturday and then a, a little more on Sunday. Uh, but still pretty level across the board, uh, which I think indicates that our deployment practices um, are, are being effective since um, we're not seeing those, those large spikes that we used to, we used to have. Next slide, please. Uh, this shows, uh, this slide shows the offense trends, and this is per hour. Uh, and you'll see that about the fourteen hundred mark, well, it's hard to see on this slide, but um, on the fourteen hundred mark, which is two P M. Um, it, it, we get, start getting an uptick uh, that carries with it all the way to the end. The last column there would be for uh, eleven, twenty-three hundred or eleven o'clock at night. Um, so uh, kind of late, late afternoon, evening hours. Um, other than we have one kind of um, anonymously at uh, ten o'clock where we did get an uptick. This is when the, the offenses are uh, reported. The next slide is going to be for um, the Colonial Beach Volunteer Fire Department. In fact, I want to thank you. For the fourth quarter, they total uh, or responded to a hundred and thirty-seven calls, which included thirty-two fire calls, eleven motor vehicle uh, accidents or collisions, fifty-two EMS calls, twenty-six public service calls. Uh, they logged a total of three hundred and s- uh, eighty-seven, a little over three hundred and eighty-seven man-hours uh, and averaged approximately three, three uh, almost, for a little more than three and a half uh, members per call. and averaged approximately three, three uh almost with a little more than three and a half uh members per call. The next slide uh is the their uh twenty twenty-four total. Uh, so this is the uh the totals from from the entire year, uh where they responded to five hundred and fifty-seven calls, hundred and seventy-seven fire calls, seventy-four motor vehicle collisions, uh two hundred and forty-four EMS calls, eighty-two public service calls, uh logged a total of uh one thousand one hundred and sixteen hours um and of uh member work and then average uh members per call was a little over four. Next slide, please. Um, and there's a, just to be advised, there's a couple corrections on this slide. Um, the Westmoreland Department of Emergency Services responded to a total of two hundred and twenty-three medical calls uh during this uh timeframe. Uh, they averaged approximately nine point zero two minutes uh in response time to each call and completed a total of a hundred and forty-three transports. And that's the extent of my report. If there are any questions.
Yes, Mr. Wood.
Uh, a question for you, Chief, and I'm sure if I should address this to you or Ms. Tucker. Uh, we have a situation. Sorry. We had a situation uh last week where uh a citizen had seen someone sleeping on a bench in terribly cold weather. They called Westmoreland and we can't tell if they responded or not. I believe that you and Ms. Tucker had conversations about the best way for citizens to handle that when we see somebody in a dangerous situation like that. Is there a particular procedure we should follow other than just calling Westmoreland County?
Um, so I think when you and I had spoken about that situation, um I'd stated that since Westmoreland County um would have the resources for that, that they would be the first um people to call. But after speaking with the chief, um we've determined that the best course of action is for them to call our local uh police department, who would then um contact Westmoreland County if they um need to. That way we can better track um, you know, where that person goes from that point.
Yeah, cuz it builds in some accountability. It that the citizens got calls.
Correct.
And he's at the last. Okay, thanks, guys. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, here to give the utility report for the month of December. And it's gonna be a little bit of a overview of the whole year since it is kind of the end of our year. So to start off with the month of December, um you know, you see that the wastewater, the flow is still a little low during the off-season here. And if you go to the next page or the next graph, you can kind of see that the flow for the next couple of months during the down season, you know, shows around four fifty, four seventy-five thousand gallons per day. And that's also a lot of of the the constant I and I that we have here with the groundwater, the intrusion there. So that's kind of as low as what we think we're gonna see it, you know, throughout the year. And it will probably pick back up, you know, like last year or sometime around January and February. Uh, December last year was was pretty high. And then if you see the comparison for this year, you know, that's contributed to some of the repairs being made out in the collection system and then also calibration of the meters at the plant. So uh next slide, please. You know, the F one quality, um you know, for the first time since we've been here, we have violated our general permit. We have had exceedances of ammonia for the month of December. Starting December the seventh, when the temperature dropped, it started inhibiting what we call nitrification at the wastewater treatment plant. As I've discussed previously, you know, this is the treatment plant is a living organism. It's it's, you know, it it's bac- bacteria that's that's living in that treatment plant. What we have to do is give it the the proper environment to thrive, to treat, to complete the nitrification, denitrification process. And when it gets cold, that's, you know, the the biological process, the bugs, they don't like the cold enough like we do. So when it slows down, on top of that, not having the proper amount of food coming into that large plant to feed the bugs, to give it the energy, and then the failed mixers in the E Q tanks that we've talked about. You know, what we're trying to do is reestablish uh a colony of nitrified bacteria. And when those mixers fail, that bacteria goes back into those anox tanks and becomes trapped there because it's not properly being mixed. So this time of year with being cold on top of those mixer failures, it's making it difficult for us to regain nitrification. Uh, part of our consent order with D E Q requires that when we do have evaluation, we must contact D E Q, give them an explanation of what's going on and why. So we have been in contact with D E Q. We have been working with them through the process, keeping them up to date on what we're doing to achieve nitrification. And one thing that we're doing on this end is we do have the mixer motors out of the tanks now for repair. Those motors have been repaired. They're back at the site. We had scheduled to replace those today. But with the frigid cold, it's not safe to put the operators down in those tanks on top of that equipment where it's frozen that they have to walk on to make this repaired. So we have rescheduled that for next week. So you know, we get these mixers going again, get everything working that we believe that that's gonna fix our uh ammonia issue as well as the nitrate problem that we've been having, you know, for the last, well, several months since last year. So um well, it's it's a good thing to get the mixers going, but this is one thing we're just having to fight through until we get it there. Uh, next page. As you see there, you know, the other uh sample results come back within permit limits, B O D. You know, so we haven't lost treatment completely. We still are discharging clear water. It's just exceeding the ammonia limits that's in the permit. Uh, next page, please. You know, here's your ammonia levels. So that dotted line there is where the where they need to be. You can see the amount of samples that are up high. You know, it's um, it's one thing that we'll have to work through. We are concerned and we're making every adjustment we may get that under control, but these mixers in warm weather is gonna ultimately be the solution. Another thing that we're doing, we call augmentation. We are adding nitrifying bacteria to the tanks that you have to purchase from a chemical distributor. So um, you know, we are doing that. We're doing everything we can operationally to fix that. And D E Q understands how the cold weather affects the plants. So they they know what we're doing. They know we're putting that effort in. Uh, next page, please. This is your disinfection intercafe coliforms, you know, so what we're discharging to the river still meets the the limits as far as E Coli. Ah, going down. This is all the the nitrates, phosphorus. We continue to violate the nitrates, you know, and those mixers being repaired is really gonna be part of the solution for that. After we get the mixers done, the next focus is gonna be on the sand filters for the skater system to to control the denitrification that is scheduled to be done in February. That equipment has already been ordered. Uh, you see your operational notes. You know, there's always a lot going on over there right now. Lot of repairs, lot of adjustments. Uh, another thing that we're doing over there is we're setting the plan up to run what we call a carbon source, an additional carbon, supplemental carbon, and that's to take place of the lack of food that's coming into the plant during this time of year. And what we're hoping is uh as things warm up and people start coming back, we start getting more fresh carbon, more food in the plant, we can back off that use of that chemical, but only time. So uh, next page, please. Uh, actually go to the the next paper we were talking about. So you know, previously in meeting, Natasha had provided this spreadsheet with all of the repairs that's been made at the plant, you know, prioritized and things of that nature. And I wanna put a little bit more focus on this, you know, for a year in review. For this many repairs to take place in a year's time, that's significant. And I think it's important that everybody understands that. One thing that I constantly hear is what are we doing? What are we doing to fix the problem? Well, here's what we're doing. And this is a lot. And it's it's a constant, ongoing thing. But the reason that we're able to achieve this is because we get the support. We get the support from the council. We get the support from Natasha. We get the support from the public works. I mean, public works is doing all of this work. You know, and it's it's a, you know, we're all working together to get that done. And this is what happens when you work together. So I would like to continue this progress because this is the path to a solution. And that really concludes my report. Does he might have any questions?
Mr. Wood?
John, do me a favor, if you will, um because that's a lot of information for everybody to take at one time. Give me five bullet points of what we're doing to fix the problem. And if we do those things, what are we gonna look like at the end of next summer?
Uh, fix the mixer motors, fix the skater on the sand filters, continue to remove the excess solids. Um, you know, work on the dissolved oxygen in the nitrification tanks and then continue to improve pressing operations.
Okay, and where does that leave us at the end of next summer?
At the end of next summer, I believe we'll be able to meet all of our permit requirements, the general permit and the W Q I F requirement.
Okay, and then the last question for you. Uh, you had mentioned you had made report to D E Q. Um, have they been supportive, even though we've exceeded some of those numbers, especially this past month?
You know, D E Q, I don't know that I would necessarily call a supportive role. It's more of an oversight and they're gonna make sure we do what we're supposed to do. But they're very appreciative of the communication and appreciative of the action being taken to get the plan back in order. And they make it very clear that that they're watching. So that that was really the best way to answer that.
Okay, thank you, John. Yes, sir.
Quick, quick. Question for you, John.
Mm-hmm.
The sludge, where it says the conveyor system upgrade for the sludge is still low. Um, are you on track for that?
We are. And what that is, is a wish because the current conveyor system is elevated. It's it's above your head. So when you walk in the door, it's all on top of a metal structure that's deteriorating. And we believe in the future, it's safer to bring that equipment down and to add another type of conveyor system to where it's not something that's gonna cause someone to be injured.
Okay, so that's something that's on us. It's not outside or contracted out. We handle that ourselves. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I was just wondering what, it's hard to read this. Well, hopefully I'll be able to read it later, but what's the significance of the colors? Is green mean it's been done or?
It's basically um, the green is complete, the yellow is low priority, the orange is medium priority and red being high priority.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is the same chart that was presented in December?
Yes.
Can you zoom back a little bit?
Yeah, this is a chart that Natasha had provided in December.
And then scroll down. Oh, too fast. Okay, um, and it is online cuz I I think I downloaded it online from the December meeting, so anybody can go and get it, get a copy of that.
And all that green is what's been completed.
Right. And I do have a follow-up question. Um, you had mentioned we were working on the presser. Um, but it required some special parts. They don't make anymore. Some guy from Texas, I think.
Yes, a repair from Texas. He was trying to source the parts that we need. He is still waiting for some of those parts and we have reached out to him to try to speed that process up.
Okay. Thank you. And the skater system for the sand filters is a separate skater system, not the skater system that we already replaced?
Correct, it's a separate system.
Okay, but it will integrate with our?
It will integrate and it's actually housed in a different building. It will be in the sand filter building that you, at the right side when you come into gate. And there was one room in there that you were in that, you know, it showed that big cabinet. That's where that system will go.
Okay, and the prior skater system, that's a warranty and updates. Are there any annual maintenance that needs to be done to that system to keep it um with the most, you know, up-to-date software, those kinds of things? Cuz that was an issue prior was they never bought the maintenance contract on the skater system. And so we had included that to make sure the maintenance, you know, maintenance on that is.
Yes, Chris has made sure that those agreements are in place.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move back to the table, sir. Thank you.
I'd like to acknowledge um the Westmoreland County Administrator, who I noticed is in the audience, Mr. Jim Taylor. I'm sure when um Mr. Trivet has his uh remarks, he probably will have some work. So welcome, sir.
Excellent.
So we've made two really um important hires um this month already. We have promoted um Sally Adams, who was our acting director of um Parks Recreation and Events. That was a part-time position that Sally was holding and she really um was just she did a really great job in making sure that all of the events um were scheduled and and just went off without a hitch. And so we, she has been promoted to our full-time director of Parks and Recreation Events. And we have also added to our finance department, Ms. Bridget Davis. She is our uh customer service clerk in the finance department. So if you all go into um finance, she is right there at the desk assisting with uh making sure that uh payments and such are being processed timely. Um, and update on the W Q I F assessment that um we've received. If you all remember, I had previously presented that I was able to negotiate um with D E Q just spreading out the total amount of the fine over a four-year period. And so we have made the first installment um payment of twenty-three thousand five hundred and thirteen um dollars that uh we should have received that invoice on January sixth, but because of the storm event, we were closed, the Richmond offices were closed. They um submitted that invoice to us um Friday, I want to say. And so we have mailed a check um for that. And I have been in communication with the E Q and um they're aware that because they were closed, they couldn't get that out to us. Um, so for this up, of course, upcoming budget, we are going to include that next installment um so that we can uh make sure we pay that timely. For the ADA sidewalks, um number two, the one twenty-eight Washington Avenue. Our public works uh crew, um they actually have already updated and completed um that sidewalk. So the next sidewalk that we will tackle will be the one on Irving Street. Um, that is a seventy-five thousand dollar cost for that. And we have until the um last day in June um to complete that. And so as soon as the weather um the snow events get a little better, better, um will begin on that sidewalk. And then you'll notice that um for uh the next one, two, three, four years, um we will just attack other sidewalks that were identified in that letter. Um, so in March of twenty-four, council directed us to issue a solicitation so that we can move forward with phase one of Eleanor Park uh from the Parks Master Plan that was adopted. And so that solicitation included a site plan um so that we can install benches that were donated um to the town. We issued this solicitation. Uh, Howith was uh retained as the engineer. He provided a site plan um that was in line with um the drawing that was adopted from the Parks Master Plan to install the benches. Um, everything was in place for us to begin installation of the benches by the end of the year. Um, but then we got some snow. And so we haven't been able to install the benches uh just because of the weather. And so as soon as the weather subsides and the snow and ice um has fully melted, we will uh proceed with installing the benches. We already have three slabs um that Howith has put down. Um, and once he is able, he'll go ahead and uh add the remaining slabs and install the benches. So an update on the North Beach uh grant application. The deadline for the middle of that grant is this Friday, the twenty-fourth. Um, we are on track for meeting all of the requirements to apply for um the grant. Um, there is a resiliency presentation that is coming for you tonight. And if you all to uh vote to adopt that plan, I will forward the um adopted plan to Jerry Davis, who's helping us with the grant, so that can be included as part of the grant packet um that will help our application since this is a very competitive um round um for these grants. So what we have as part of our packet now, um So what we have as part of our packet now, um, are letters of support, um, from me, from the mayor. Um, our state-elected official delegate, uh, Hugh Kent and Senator Stewart. As well as letters of support, um, from some of the North Beach residents. Um, and so pending approval of that resiliency plan, um, I'll provide that and then. As early as tomorrow, but as late as Friday, uh, Jared will go ahead and submit that application on our behalf. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for the town manager? Ms. Williams? Okay, you go first, I called Mr. Williams and that's how it's going.
Okay, um, yeah, just a question, um, as far as the site plan. Um, one of the things I've always been big on is, um, you know, the public, you know, like, get a say in what happens to their, their land. Um, I know that we had three sketches presented to the public and they put sticky notes on them, and that's how we picked the plan. But there wasn't really any dimensions, um, that the exact locations of benches and trees and other things were on there. Um, so I'm just wondering, uh, in the future, could we put these site plans out? Like, once we have draft site plans for the community to get some feedback before we go ahead and start work on the parks?
So community input was given, um, I believe it was very done. Um, before the Parks Master Plan was adopted. And once the Parks Master Plan was adopted, um, just the picture of how, um. There were the three options, and upon adoption, one of those, um. For, what is it called, for lack of a better word, drawings, um, selected. So what council approved was for staff to move forward in implementing, um, that piece of the Parks Master Plan. So public input was already received, taken into account, so the. Minute details of the setting out of the benches and such, those types of decisions don't require community input at this point.
So are you saying a standard policy, if the town's gonna do a major project, they then won't put out like the site plan for people to have a look at it prior to work starting?
When we did the central drainage project downtown, I mean, we rely on an engineer to do that, or call that coming back for. And and if we were to do that, I would definitely want the engineer, the architect, or whoever to be the one presenting the information. Cuz there's a lot that they, um, goes into positioning those things. Cuz are all the trees that are there are staying? I had that question.
So we had an on-burst to assist, um, Howith, uh, when they surveyed the park area. So two trees were dead, so those were removed, and one was diseased. And so that was removed, so those are the only three trees that have been removed from the park. All of the other trees are remaining, and so the benches are being installed in a way that it will not hinder, uh, the trees.
I had that question, yes, Mr. Als?
Uh, do we have an update for the, um, like, better terms, Dorset Park? In the, uh, Trafford in the Zale, the?
The pirate ship?
Oh, yeah, so now that we have a full-time parks director, we did have a draft of, um, an RFP for the design build for that. And so we are going to issue that solicitation, um, pretty soon.
Thanks.
Yes, Ms. Williams?
Is is that something that going forward, we could present to the public? So they have an idea of exactly, I mean, me personally, a sketch is nice, but a sketch is a sketch.
Are you talking about the solicitation for North Park or?
Once once we get somebody to design the, um, the site plan, could that be something that could be released to the public, maybe give some feedback if there's any major concerns? Um, prior to, like, we didn't start to work on, on our, I'm just asking if we could, going forward, give the public, um. An opportunity to see those plans before they start to implement them.
Going forward, meaning for North Park, not Eleanor, okay, so. Whoever the awarded vendor will be for North Park, um. Again, scheduled that they would come and give a presentation, um. But the wording of the RFP as it stands now. And it has not, to my knowledge, been a best practice to allow community members to offer input on site plans. Because that's what the town is enlisting, um, with an engineer that it retains.
I think we'll make sure we work efficiently and effectively and, um, and stay in our policy realm as a town council. And not, uh, we're not seven town managers, we're a body of council.
I wanted to add one last thing, I failed to mention earlier that, um. I'm attending VMLs, which, um, stands for the Virginia Municipal League's Local Government Day in Richmond, January thirtieth. Um, I'll speak to our elected, um, officials there regarding items that we, um, approved for our legislative agenda. Um, but of particular interest, um, to me this time around is, uh, VML support of an additional fifty million dollars to the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund. Which could benefit the town greatly.
Yeah. Any other questions for the town manager? All right, we'll keep moving forward. You're up next, Sergeant Wright. Okay. Next on our agenda is a very special presentation. In recognition of a decade of service, go ahead. Does she know? Was it a surprise? Yeah. I'm gonna say a few nice things about you, and then I'm happy to say a few nice things about you. Um, I will say, uh, it's been a pleasure to work with Sergeant Wright, she is, um. Has, I've seen her handle everything from a very intense situation, um. In a public parking lot with someone who is having a complete mental episode. And she was calm, cool, patient, kind. I have seen her handle incidents within the school, she has the children's confidence and their trust. Um, she knows their lives and and the ongoing, she cares deeply, and it comes out in everything she says. She is a woman of faith and brings that faith into, um, a life of service. And I have seen it over and over again, and we're just so appreciative to have you, Sergeant Wright, as part of, um, our team here. And, uh, I just wanna say thank you for that. And I'll leave it to Chief Parsons to add.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, I have been, or I have had the distinct pleasure of working with Sergeant Wright, uh, for those ten years. And I can tell you that, uh, uh. She has never failed to impress me, uh, with her work ethic, with the way that she handles calls, the way that she handles people. Um, and the past few years, as our, uh, school resource officer. Uh, she has done just an exemplary job of, uh, building relationships with not only, uh, the school and the police department. But also, uh, with the community and with the kids, the, uh, the children, the, uh, students that are, uh, in our school program. Uh, so we have been, uh, remarkably blessed to have her on our team for these ten years. Um, I'm incredibly proud to call her a teammate, um, and I'm. Just very, very glad that she's chosen, uh, to remain here with us for these ten years, and I hope she stays a whole lot longer.
I hope so too, and Sergeant Wright is also a very good dancer, if you did not know. And brings the fun to community events that we all need in our lives, and so, um, just for your character. Or your enthusiasm, and for a great job done over these past ten years, let's please applaud, um. You can come up here, cuz I got something to give you real quick.
Madam Mayor, can I say something?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say that I met Sergeant Wright, I guess seventeen, so. Like, eight of those ten, during an outreach event. And she has remained, it's hard to say that someone remains consistent in attitude, demeanor, and just the overall way you handle everything. And you have remained that way, and, um, well done, well served, so congratulations, you earned this.
I just wanna say to everyone, thank you very much. I just wanna say to everyone, thank you very much, it's been a pleasure. Um, honestly, I've been here eleven years, and I had to work part-time to build myself up here. But I just wanna thank everyone, it's been a pleasure in working with the children, um, your children show who their families are. It's just been a real pleasure, so thank you. Thank you. It doesn't get better than that for tonight, I'll tell you that. All right, Erin, how do you follow tenure service recognition, right? Welcome, come on up.
Got no choice, I'll do the best I can, thank you all, good evening, thanks for having me here. Here to present the, the financial report for fiscal year twenty-four and results of the audit. Um, gonna go over to some key pages within the document that. I know everyone up there has a hard copy, I know there's been a PDF circulating around for, uh, several weeks now, so, um. I've flagged some pages like I normally would, I think are maybe most relevant, interesting pages to go over. And then, um, open it up for any questions that you all have made. Oh, and tucked inside the first page is the separate management letter that we issued for the year, which I'll tip the people over that, uh, last, so. I'm going over the financial report, uh, page one is where I always start, this is our auditors' report. It's where you see RFC, my company at the top of the page, that's where we issued the auditors' report, which includes our opinion on the financial statements. Um, the opinion is unmodified, which is a good thing, if it were, if it were a modified opinion, it would mean that, um. Everything's okay, but, or there would be some explanatory language, so the fact that it's called an unmodified opinion means that this is the standard opinion that we give. Um, when the financial statements that follow this, um, we feel are materially correct based on the testing that we've done. Last year, there would have been a paragraph on this page also to talk about, um, probably any, any, or the past couple of years, I think we've had new standards that have come out related to. Leases and, um, subscription-based IT arrangements, which this year there were no, um, new standards, um, that we had to disclose. And the, in the opinion or changes because of that. Next page I'm gonna go over is on page six. Um, and again, when I say these page numbers, um, um, just for future reference, I'll talk about the hard copy. Page number at the bottom, if you happen to be listening to this or watching this later, and you're on a PDF, the PDF page number would obviously be different, so. Uh, page number, hard copy, number six, uh, which is exhibit three, uh, this is your governmental funds. And I always like to just hone in and talk about your general fund balance, um, this as a key area of, of being cognizant of, which. Your fund balance for your general fund is about five point five million dollars, a little over that. Of that five point five million, five point one of it is unassigned, uh, which means that that portion of it is free to use at the town's discretion. As opposed to being, um, tied up, so to speak, in amounts that are committed or restricted, um, for other purposes. On page eight, exhibit five, that's where you see the changes in your general fund balance for the year. Um, that first column, general fund, you, at the very bottom, fund balance beginning, you had about four point eight million last year in your fund balance. Um, at the end of the year, you were at about five and a half, as I just said on the previous page, that number should be read back. The exhibit three fund balance, which is a little over five point five million dollars. I'm gonna jump very far ahead in the report to where you see RNA RFC at the top again, which is page eighty-four. And page eighty-four is our report that we have to issue, um, under government auditing standards for internal control testing. And, um, state compliance work that we have to do. And if we have findings to report based on that, this is where we would identify that finding. Um, this year, we, we do have a finding that we've identified, um, you'll see it on kind of the last paragraph here of this page. Um, it's item number twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-one, um, an item that we consider to be a material weakness, which is just a classification of a finding. Um, we talk about this a little bit further in the report, which I'll get to momentarily. And then on page eighty-six, this is our report and opinion that we have to issue on federal compliance work. Um, we perform federal compliance work over the town and component units, and if we had findings to report, federal findings, this is where we would identify those. Um, we do not have any federal findings to report, um, this year in doing the audit. And then I'm gonna jump to the last page, page ninety-two, which is where we see that item, uh, that we disclosed on that. The report on our internal control testing and and compliance work, the item number twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-one, it's a financial statement finding. Um, during the course of the audit, we had identified the school board, um, that they had payroll recordings during the year. State and federal payroll, payroll recordings that they withheld from employees' checks. They didn't, you're supposed to send out those amounts out quarterly as you receive those amounts and withhold them. They did not have those amounts go out until after the end of the fiscal year, so I think it was in, I believe, August or so. I'm not sure if I identified that on this page or not, but I think it was in August, they identified the problem and sent those amounts out, so they caught it themselves and took care of it. Um, but just the fact that those amounts were withheld and not sent out to the IRS and Department of Taxation. Um, timely during the year, we, we felt that we needed to identify that as a binding, a material weakness in the financial statements for this year. And then before I open it up for questions, I will just touch on the management letter that we issued, which is tucked in inside the first page of your reports up there. We had two items to talk about on the management letter, and we, I'll just kind of take, take a moment, just describe what we used the management letter for. These are items that we, we come, you know, when we come across our various controls testing and walkthroughs and audit work. Things that we identify that don't reach the level of needing to be a binding, um, we can communicate in the management letter. And there's always a little bit of discretion involved, um, but these were two items that we felt like we needed to identify in the management letter. One being the bank reconciliation process not being done timely. Um, it is being done and being done accurately, uh, but the timeliness of it needs to improve. Um, I know for the June twenty-two-four bank reconciliation, um, when we started our audit fieldwork in October, it had not been completed yet. Um, so we actually had to, um, take a pause on the fieldwork, it got reconciled by the town staff, and I knew we returned by the end of the week to finish up our audit fieldwork. But, um, obviously, you wanna have that done before audit fieldwork starts, so, um, wanted to communicate that, um, you know, bank reconciliation needs to be. Performed more timely, and then the other bullet that we have on that, or bullet point that we have on the management letter is. For our school board procurement, uh, when we were at the school board doing our dispersment testing there, uh, the school board's policy states that. Um, they are to obtain three verbal quotes for any purchases between a thousand dollars and ten thousand dollars. And during the testing dispersments, we noted that there were several instances where the purchase in that threshold didn't have those verbal quotes documented. Um, I think we believe in most of those cases, if not all, that it probably did take place, but there was nothing to document that it happened, and so. I think we believe in most of those cases, if not all, that it probably did take place, but there was nothing to document that it happened, and so. Just recommending that, you know, the school board either adhere to their purchasing policy. Or revisit that policy if they want to, you know, take a different approach for what needs or what quotes versus not, but. In utilizing the current policy that they have, we recommended that they make sure that they document those quotes before they make that purchase. Now, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions that you all have for me.
Are there any questions at this time? I know we just got it, so we can always have follow-up later with, through the town manager. Yes, Mr. Williams.
Been on council for a few years and got a couple of these, but it's a little overwhelming, almost a hundred pages. Do you have any recommendations for? Council members like me have been here for a while, but also for brand new ones, like when we're looking through this. What should, what should we focus on if we're trying to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars?
Sure, absolutely, I mean, I touched on the fund balance part, which is obviously something that you always wanna be cognizant of at on council, but. Another area that I think's a good place to look at is, could you give me one moment? The budgetary analysis compared to actual, I think is a very useful exhibit within the report, I said on which page it's on. But we do a whole exhibit where we're comparing actual amounts versus budget, so exhibit twelve on page sixty-nine. Obviously, when it comes to budget process and also just determining, did we, you know, what, what areas did we, you know, spend in the budget or over budget? And just, it's just good information.
We've been in the green.
And also the findings you pointed out at the end, considered low risk, high risk, what?
I don't know that when it comes to a find, I mean, I, I don't know that we have to dislike considering them high versus low risk, when something reaches that level of material weakness, that's. What it is, like it's, it's its own classification, so when we do that report on. Internal controls and compliance, it actually, those paragraphs, I know it's a lot of verbiage in there, but they actually describe. What the different findings can be, there's a significant deficiency, and it kind of gives you a definition of what that is, and it shows a material weakness and what that is, so this is considered. A material weakness, it's something that happened during the year, yes, the school board caught it, but. And they fixed it after the end of the year, but, so to speak, but it was still something that presents, in our opinion. Something that could lead to material problems later, just because it, it appeared and it existed, so. Guess I, I'm not sure if I answered the question well, but.
Yeah, and also, I know last year, we're patting ourselves on the back for getting our. Our internal control issues resolved, are they still all resolved?
So, I mean, the, so you all have had findings in the past, certainly related to things over the years, I can't remember what all. Those findings were, but those, yes, it was great that those were resolved. But and to say that there's no internal control things to be cognizant of, I mean, that management letter, talking about bank reconciliation being timely, that's still something that. Needs to be at the forefront, making sure this gets timely, I get done timely, because the thing is, if you ever do fall behind. You can get way behind if you're not careful, and so in this case, it was only, you know, I think during the year, they were usually within a few months, they'd get taken care of, but. It's definitely, it can be a slippery slope, so yes, you all have taken care of a lot of the findings that you've had in the past, but. Yeah, that's why we issued that management letter as well as be cognizant of that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Aaron, so much.
Thank you all very much, happy season.
Alright, next up is Mr. Trivet, our county supervisor, and I'm sure he'll. Introduce Mr. Jim Taylor to us all.
Well, Madam Mayor, Town Council, welcome to the new council members. I look forward to working with you, phone number's always available, and if you need anything from the county. Or anything that I can do to help you, please don't hesitate to call, also wanna congratulate Sergeant Wright. She's a jewel, I've been at accident scenes with her, I've been at the school with her when she was dealing with issues with children, and she's always very professional. She does her job with a smile, even though, you know, sometimes that don't always end in a good way. Whoever she may be dealing with, but she's always very professional, and I wanna thank her for her service to our community. We have, we had our organizational meeting at our last meeting, and Darryl Fisher was selected to be the chairman again this year. And I will serve as the vice chairman again this year. I wanted to, I don't, I can't remember, it's been so long since we've been here, it seems like, but I just wanted to mention that. The sheriff's office was able to help forty families with shopping with the sheriff, and several of those were from Colonial Beach. And I participated in helping him with that program for the last three or four years, and. And it's just been a blessing to do it, and, and this year I was able to give him over ten thousand dollars, and it was just really very helpful. In us increasing the number of families and increasing the number of, how much money we use on each individual. Family, so it really was a very successful program, and actually, some of the other board supervisors. Jumped on board and bought dinner for the families when they came, and as well as giving them Christmas dinners to take home. So it was very successful, and I think those are so many kind of people. People that live in this town, they just keep giving and they never, never wanna know or be recognized or anything, but, but I'm. I'm, I'm really blessed to know so many good people in this town, I just wanted to mention that several months ago back in March, I think I, I told you. Might have been March, might have been after that. We recognize first station, and, and we also, you know, after voting to turn that over to the state. They requested that we do an audit, and it was gonna cost us, I think the figure we got was around a hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars to do the audit. So we didn't wanna spend that money, so I volunteered to do it, so it's actually taken me a long time. Longer than I thought, and it's literally hundreds of thousands of pages, we know that we're gonna save over a million dollars probably each year of taxpayer dollars. Once it's completed, it's already started, we had numerous commercial companies. That was dumping at our transfer station, they were bringing trash into our county from Caroline Stafford. King George, Essex, you name it, it was coming to our transfer station, and our taxpayers was paying for it to be. Hauled to King and Queen County, and it costs a lot of money. So we're still working at that, and I think I told you when we had that first talk about it. That we wasn't gonna cover this up, that we were gonna get to the bottom of it, and we were gonna resolve it, and, and I'm still happy to say that we're not charging the town anything. To dump at that transfer station. I'm very thankful that the town manager has been in contact and met with the county administrator as well as the mayor. With the town manager Montross, and they're working together, and it's great to have that collaboration in relationship, so hopefully soon. I'll have a report for you, or we'll know something more that will help us along those lines. We won't have a work session this month, so just to let you know, I don't, y'all don't normally come to the work sessions that we have anyway. But, but I'm very appreciative when you always come to all of our regular meetings, and, but anyway, that's been canceled. And I'm also, I'm, I'm thankful to welcome tonight our county administrator, Mr. Taylor. And I'll let you, if you don't mind, and, and talk about himself a little bit, but he has really hit the ground running. He has a lot of work to do with helping us with a strategic plan, comprehensive plan, every kind of plan in the world. He knew what he was getting into when he came, but I'll tell you, it's just been, it's. It's really been an honor to work with somebody who's very professional. He's so low-key, his voice, everything, I mean, he's so easy to work with, and I think the town manager's met with him some, and. And so I'm really looking forward to, to seeing what great things that he helps us do as a county, so, Mr. Taylor.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Trivet, and Madam Mayor, council members, it's a pleasure to be here. And I have six weeks to new job, and so I'm brand new, but just trying to, to learn the organization, learn the county, learn towns. Had the opportunity to, to meet and get to know Ms. Tucker, and so really excited to, to work with her as well, so. I won't take too much of your time, but just wanna say that I think the relationships are important, and I value our partnership. Looking forward to working with you, if there's everything, everything I do to, to assist you, please, you know, please let me know, and thank you for your service.
Madam Mayor, anybody have any questions for you?
I have one, first off, I can't wait to work with you, Mr. Taylor, it's very exciting. But I just wanna know if you wanna highlight a little bit of what Judge Sickel had brought forward at the last meeting, because. The opioid epidemic has settlement funds, and people haven't been tracking this issue. They are dispersed out to states, and the states are dispersing those funds, then to counties and cities, towns will not get their. Funds directly, but these are settlement funds from all kinds of different companies. That helped push opioids and the addiction that has resulted of that in our communities. And Colonial Beach is not a stranger to these issues. And so I know the county, and I hope to see continued collaboration to. Finding ways to use those resources here, cause there is, I think, a hotspot in Colonial Beach. And I know they're countywide, but I just would like to put a little emphasis that there. You know, to make sure that there is continued collaboration on that, but I thought that her presentation about the special docket. Was a very exciting one, and, and so maybe just wanna highlight that.
Well, Madam Mayor, thank you for reminding me of that, and you already did a, a good job of basically saying what it's about. For those of you that don't know Julia Sickel, she was our Commonwealth attorney. And she done an outstanding job and spent countless hours working on this as well as other things. And she asked the board, as well as EMS, to, if the, if the board would approve money. To help with this program, and I believe it was twenty thousand dollars that we approved at that meeting to help this cause. So when they're on that docket, she's gonna do everything she can to help whoever comes in front of her, and, and she's very down to earth. She, she cares about people, and she cares about rehabilitation, and about just not throwing somebody in jail, but doing whatever can happen. To help them get their lives back together, and I mean, what a, what a great program. And, and she's willing to take that on and help any way she can with that, and I think that's, that's a great asset to our county. And I know we get a lot of people down in, in our courthouse that live in this town. In this district, and, and I think that they'll be afforded the same opportunities that everybody else in this county gets, so. I'm sure that anything that we can do to help with that, we will as a board as well at the county level. So thank you for bringing that up, cause that's an extremely important program, and, and I know she's gonna, you know, do an outstanding job of being in charge of that.
Yeah, and just so that the public's aware, this is a collaboration of multiple counties, and so she came to Westmoreland, but it's also going to. Other counties in the northern neck, if each one pitches in a portion of these funds. To pay for a staff person to run the docket at the courthouses. So that as people find themselves. In trouble in these ways, they are, there is a special docket that pairs them with recovery. And programs in recovery, and so it's just a, a very, I think. Unique way to handle part of, it's just one piece of, you know, the epidemic and how to tackle it. But it is a big piece that I think is gonna make a big difference in people's lives that this is affecting. And it really touches all of us, there's anybody in this room that has probably hasn't had a family member, a friend, a neighbor, or something. Of that sort, and so anyway, I look forward to, I know there's other funds, and there'll be other programs as well. There was more than EMS, and our local station here can collaborate with, you know, our services in town too. And this was just the start to getting this off the ground, but it has to go to General Assembly, it has to get through Richmond, and so she's gonna be petitioning for that. And we will support her.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, any other questions, bye? Thank you.
Royal Beach Public Schools. Welcome, Dr. Adams.
Hello, hello, good evening, and happy new year. I don't think I've seen most of you guys in the new year. Madam Mayor, council members, first, Madam Mayor, congratulations on your reelection. We're very happy, and I look forward to working with you for the town and the school system. And to the new council members, we have met, we have chatted, and I toured the schools, I appreciate your. Your visit to the school system, hopefully it was beneficial for you guys, but I will turn to the side. A little bit and embarrass my professional friend behind me, Sergeant Wright. Congratulations, well deserved, I give her a hard time almost every time I visit the school. If you do not know, she is a plant whisperer. And if you know, she, she loves plants, she has brought my dead plant. To life at one time, which she kept for, I think, maybe six to eight months in your house? Six months, six months, and it came back lively than, than ever, but moving on. I want to share some good things happening in the school system, we have started the second semester, we are very excited. After a week-long implement weather, that our kids were, were home, but of course. Safety is, is number one, is paramount, but whenever the kids are home, we, we do miss them because. Instruction gets out of whack a little bit, meaning there's a break, and then our teachers have to get back into the routine. Again, so we always love it to be continuous, hopefully no more breaks. If we have some delays, I, I, I am good with that, but not missing the entire school day, okay? Now, if you don't know, we have a slew of mandates, and I must put it that way, from Department of Education. This school year, we are making all of it, and doing our best to meet the requirements, I have mentioned a few of them to you. In terms of the Virginia Literacy Act, the new school performance and. And credibility accreditation that we have to meet, that's math standards, science standards. There, there are a lot of things that have been thrown at a school system, and, and we're working through that. We want to also let you know that we added two new teachers to our family that started this second semester. From the Philippines, Mrs. Estamata, who is a high school math teacher, and also Mrs. Basilio. Who's gonna be one of our kindergarten teachers, and again, those positions are hard to fill, and we are very excited to have them. Join us with an extensive background in teaching and, and degrees, so far they have been wonderful. I wanna especially thank the community for their help in securing housing. For our two teachers, and also to furnish their house, it takes a village, because. They, they are leaving their families behind to a whole new world with nothing but a suitcase. So their transition is daunting, but with a community like this. I think it makes it a lot easier for them to transition. Now, last week, we celebrated our principals at both schools, they are dedicated, passionate, and committed to our students and staff. We are very appreciative of their efforts, so thank you, Mr. Lush, Mrs. Coats, Mrs. Hubert. And Mr. Ellington, we are very proud of them, and they're doing a fantastic job. Next, at the last school board meeting, as a matter of fact, last week. The board reelected Mrs. Shelley Payne as the chair, and Mrs. Trace Leibern. as the chair and Mrs. Trace Leibern as the vice chair. And we are want to congratulate both of them again on their continuous service to the school division. Also, we officially welcomed our new board member, Miss Michelle Merlin. Uh we're excited to have her on the board and we look forward to what she's gonna add to enhance and improve our division. As most of you know by now, it is budget season for all school divisions. Uh we are at it. Uh we we are scrubbing and we are trying to figure out how uh we're gonna make uh all of our needs met, be met uh through our budget. Uh the governor has amended his budget, his biennium, uh FY twenty four, twenty six budget. Uh there are some modifications to his budget. I can tell you that K twelve spending items were expanded. However, that was very minimal impact for instructional and support positions. And of course, in most districts, that's about eighty five percent of of your budget. But uh the Senate is in uh or the General Assembly is is in session uh right now. Uh so we expect a a proposed amendments to the budget should be finalized sometime in March uh from the Senate and from the uh uh from the House. A huge thank you. Uh I cannot leave this podium without giving a thank you to our partners. Uh Bam, uh please, if we have any audience, thank you so much. You guys have been uh wonderful. Our PTA is is rolling. They're they're wonderful. They're supporting our school system, the athletic boosters. And also all of our businesses that support our school system. We could not do what we do uh and give all the experiences to our students without their help. And again, it it does uh take a village. We're very appreciative of their support. Uh now to my last part of the presentation, I'm going to give you a little bit about some capital improvement. Uh recently, we completed uh fencing around the bleachers on the football field and that was needed. Uh and and you know, it's a safety issue for the kids that are playing during the uh football games. Now, they will not be able to guard in the bleachers and uh hopefully not uh hurt themselves. What is in progress right now, uh due to the temperatures, of course, the generator that's supposed to be a place at a high school is on hold. Uh why is it on hold? Because they have to force a vent and and create a pad and it's too cold right now to do it. So hopefully that's coming soon. Uh HVAC autom- automated system in the high school is ninety percent complete. Uh hopefully it'll be complete and we'll have some training for our maintenance staff to make sure we're able to uh control it and uh set it as as we need to. Uh the front entrance is in progress. Uh we're excited about it. The anticipated groundbreaking to get it started is right after graduation. Uh anticipated uh completion date is in December of this year, twenty twenty five. Right now, we are in the process of getting bids for a GC, a general contractor uh who oversee the project and more to come on on that. Also, uh we're in the process of uh putting a car reader and door access at the school board office. And and then we're working with Dominion and uh electrician for the transformer to get that taken care of before the baseball season. In terms of our short term, uh we're still working on a few things on the campus in turn uh uh with with the lighting, LEDs on the high school, uh and also creating small space uh addition to our our shared magnishes that we have. Uh and I've shared this in the past. Lastly, long term improvements. Uh we've talked about a science lab uh to be uh renovated uh after nineteen eighty eight, whatever that is. It's out of date. Uh it needs an update uh for for our kids. Uh the floor tiles in the high school, uh school board parking lot, uh we we love parking on the street. But it creates a one lane uh to to go back and forth and and that that becomes an issue sometimes uh when UPS shows up. Uh it just blocks the road. Uh and then that's one of the things that we're we're looking at to enhance the facility. Uh hopefully, we'll we'll get the uh building renovation grants that we applied for from the state. Uh it helps us to to uplift and and update our our facilities and and that's the direction we're going in. And that's the uh conclusion of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
And Dr. Adams, you mentioned the front entrance. Uh is there any way, like the next time you come, you can give us a visual aid of what that should look like? Or is it all gonna be a series?
No, absolutely. It's on our website right now. You can go to the website and and look at it. It's posted. Uh it gives you a visual of what the front elevation looks like and also uh the interior. But I definitely be able to bring you something to look at.
Anything else for school? Hi, thank you so much. All right, next up is public comment. Um during the public comment, um I asked and some guidelines are followed. We'll ask you to stand at the podium and for the record, to please state your name and address. Um if you'd like to be contacted, make sure you provide uh your contact information to the clerk on the sign in sheet or uh after you speak, um make your comments to the council as a whole. Uh be brief, state your position and provide facts. There are five minutes limited to each speaker. Um you may provide written statements or supporting materials to the clerk for distribution or to council uh or email us anytime uh before or after. Uh there's no debate and follow up comments are provided by the town manager. Please speak clearly because we do uh wanna hear what you have to say and we'll try to hear everyone out. Um. And if you represent a group, please identify that and then members of your group who are in attendance. Um after public comments closed, I encourage you to continue to stay as council engages in dialogue and deliberates on each item on the agenda. But that will open public comment. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Vicki Luna and I live at seventeen hundred Beach Avenue. I uh serve on the planning commission and I've actually been serving now for almost six years. And I wanted to um let you know that uh an issue came up um that the planning commission was unaware of. And that is that uh later on in the agenda, you have on the agenda to uh so uh uh select a planning commission member. And I I just wanted to share that the six years that I've served on the planning commission, we have always, as a commission, made recommendations to the council. Um and I've spoken to other um past chairs of the planning commission before I came. And so it's really a long history and a standard that the planning commission make the recommendation and it referred to you for your consideration. Um and I'd like to share one other little thing and I'm gonna be super brief, guys. I know it's a long evening. Um that um our bylaws specify that the planning commission make recommendations to the council. And I just briefly wanna read it, that any vacancy, this is our bylaws, any vacancy in membership shall be filled by recommendation of the commission and formal appointment by the town council. Any appointed member may be approved by the town council, um and and so on. So it it says that uh members, membership shall be filled uh by recommendation of the commission. So I just briefly ask that you um defer consideration or defer uh selecting a new member um this evening until it goes to the planning commission first. Thank you.
Thank you. I think our county attorney wants to um be brief, cause we've got a lot of people to get to.
Just to clarify, at the last meeting of the planning commission, they voted to eliminate that provision of the bylaws. So planning commission no longer makes a recommendation first.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks. Uh next speaker?
Uh tonight, Pauline.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Uh the two one six Monroeville Avenue in Sundance condominiums. Um. I wanted to bring something to the council and mayor's attention and the town manager, if I could, please. Um at one time, our town museum water sewer bill was waived. And correct me if I'm wrong, was waived and the museum, which struggles sometimes, probably a lot um to meet their bills, their heating bills, like the electric bill, et cetera. Um. I'm asking that the town um look at this issue and perhaps way to start waiving that sewer interaction, sewer and water bill. Um for several reasons, they're open two days a week, Saturdays and Sundays, and have been for quite a while. Um they have no kitchen, they have no laundry, they have a small bathroom for visitors. And I hope you'll consider waiving it again. Um it is an asset to our town. It is our Colonial Beach museum.
I think the town mayor will follow up with you today. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Do you leave your contact information too? Okay, great. Thank you. Excellent.
Next up is Sandy Roenkeberg.
Welcome, Sandy.
Hello. Well, I came tonight to, I guess, complain about the North Beach with all the problems that we've had. And it's in a terrible shape, which some people know, some people don't know. But the cement is all cracked up, all the way down the boardwalk. It's very dangerous. That, I mean, people, if they fall, they will really hurt themselves. And it was a disaster. And I heard that a few people have said that the town wasn't gonna do anything about it and that you thought the people on the north side owned the boardwalk, which is not true. So I don't know who's talking at the beach. People own that area and that boardwalk. I mean, it's not our responsibility. From what I have, the research that I've been doing is that the town owns the boardwalk. It's their responsibility to maintain it. So I really hope after seeing and hearing what y'all are saying tonight, that that happens. Cause it is a disaster down there. You can't even walk down the boardwalk anymore with the mud and the water. I brought some pictures if anybody's interested in seeing them. And it's terrible. It's disgraceful. And people that live in Colonial Beach should be ashamed of it. And there's more people that go down there than you think. So anything you do to continue to help us on the north side, I really appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Reddinger. And I think there's gonna be a follow up North Beach meeting after the grant application submitted, which is Friday.
Next up is Ms. Krista Brown.
I'll pass, Madam Thorpe. Thank you.
Next up is Will Knuckles.
Welcome, Will.
Will Knuckles to a former Bay Avenue. Uh good evening to you old paces and special welcome to new ones. It's a, and I know you're in sort of a tough place that uh you're being asked to weigh in on a lot of things that predate you. It's sort of an awkward time in your term. Uh hopefully, some of the things you're hearing from the public helps you a bit with that transition. Uh I had sent uh the members individually some suggestions on bylaw changes, uh along with the fact that I thought you should have done it at the beginning of the meeting, but that's okay, right? We're still gonna take it up at some point, uh with a few particular things that I'd like to highlight here for the folks that are listening. Uh one is that we have some improved uh language relating to conflicts of interest. Um we sort of, you know, everybody sort of provides that they adhere under what the state guidelines are. But many localities actually go forth and strengthen that or at least emphasize what the state code is. And even go farther than that. I've provided you some examples of uh local code from other jurisdictions of Virginia that you could possibly follow as a model. Um also, language about closed sessions. Uh while we do go through the kind of basic bare minimum aspects of what the state requires in closed session language, other communities do go farther. Um one example that I provided you of another locality in Virginia has an interesting emphasis on the necessity of closed sessions as opposed to the ability to put it in the closed session. There's a, there's definitely a different nexus there. Um and I think that things only appearing out of the public eye because they are necessary, not because they're allowed would would be a great revision to the bylaws. Um unless there's a provision that you come up with um an alternative to the liaison concept. Uh we're sort of an hot ball. We're not the only one in Virginia that does this. Uh but a lot of your time gets sucked up uh essentially acting as the secretary to a bunch of different groups in town, right? We're supposed to be reporting back um and sort of taking notes and doing the communication piece. And it's great that you know about these things, but it's clearly coming at a cost. I think only to say that you need to look at like what's last year's budget kind of debacle where the things were very awkward and running up to the very last second. Granted, it's a core activity in town of the giant amounts of uh material that's spilled into the river from a lack of, I, what I would say was sufficient oversight over what was going on in public works is another example. So we could either point fingers at individual members or we could say, maybe we're doing the game wrong. Maybe one person having the responsibility of looking at key things that are important to the survival of the town isn't the best way to go. Most communities do this by committee, right? They don't sort of say like one person's going to be the genius that he that can only sort of deal with one port portfolio. So I suggest strongly that you look at that. And if you're gonna do that, the dialogue would be about what are the standing committees? And standing committees would do the things the town can't function without. Like if you ignore things like the budget, if you ignore critical infrastructure, if you ignore the schools, the town kind of collapses, right? Those are standing committees. And then you could also look at what are ad hoc. Ad hoc are things that are things that are important to the town, but that aren't gonna exist in perpetuity, but the things that you wanna work on the short run. So like I said, this is the normal way of doing it. Our way is the abnormal way. And I think a dialogue about suggesting changing is uh because you're trying to have improved outcomes. Not to say that the liaison concept can't work, but trying to express that at a practical level, recent experience is saying it's not working. So maybe we can just change the way we're playing the game. We'll get better outcomes. Uh next, around the part of the sewage plant operations, right? So we're still not making standards. And uh with the projections that we're going, hopefully that's true by the end of the year, we'll be able to be in compliance. Um but also, we're coming off of the year, we had a lot of droughts. Remember the whole like, you know, don't burn things in your yard because there's so little water. You can't have a, you know, fire in your backyard. We had a lot of drought last year, right? So if it rains, things are gonna get worse. Chances are it is gonna rain again, right? So we have to sort of anticipate that this is going to be hard, right? And until we can get up to handling the poop that we already have, I think a serious conversation about what we're doing with looking at growth. Because any additional input into the system stresses a system that already isn't adequate. And this is very different from a few years ago where our public works director said, hey, we have massive capacity beyond where we are now. We can, we can take on thousands of new people and we would still have excess capacity. Turned out none of that was true. Um and then we're actually not at people we have now. So I think in what you're gonna work on this year, hopefully you have a dialogue about how to live in that reality. Uh cause I don't see any dialogue about controlling growth while we're trying to get our head or our hands around this. Or the reason for justifying putting more money in to make that happen faster. Uh next, residency grant, right? So uh one is there's a different version y'all are gonna be looking at tonight, but just appeared in the packet. I hadn't seen it. Haven't public had announced that it was out again, right? So there's some changes. I have no idea if the litany of issues that were raised are thoroughly addressed in this. I doubt not. I looked at one of the things, just flipping through it. There's like a zoning map that's outdated. It's not even the current town zoning as as depicted in there. So there are errors in the report. Beyond that, there were many more substantive errors. So but I wanna tell you about how the state is gonna accept this, right? They're gonna take the fact that you say, yes, we believe in this, as a piece of whether they'll accept it. The other part is whether the community believes in it.
Appreciate it.
So.
Thanks for seeing today.
Thanks. So long, you're like, they're not gonna accept it.
Time is ready. Thank you.
Mike Muller?
Welcome, Mr. Muller.
I'm Mike Muller. I live at one one seven Riverview Circle. And I'm here speaking on behalf of Colonial Beach Wildlife Rescue. Um something that came up um like in the past two weeks as it relates to our job of um rescuing birds was a goose over in Westmoreland Shores that was showing signs of of having avian flu. And this is my first sort of, you know, dealing with anything having to do with avian flu. And uh Mary Wince took care of it because she looks out for those of us who work for her. And, uh, Mary Wenz took care of it because she looks out for those of us who work for her. She, uh, reached out to Supervisor Trivid and thank you, sir, for, you know, you know, guiding us. Um, we called the DWR and we called the State Health Department as a result of talking to Supervisor Trivid. And, um, found out there are no protocols as it relates to what to do with a bird that has contracted avian flu. This bird had contracted it, has been tested and had contracted it. And so, and through Mary's efforts, I mean, DWR, um, they first wanted to put the responsibility on us, the, the volunteer rescuers who have a limited budget, probably not all the, the safety PPE that we should have to do this. And through Mary's efforts, she was able to get through the State Department of Health them to develop protocols which they didn't have for dealing with these birds. The reason I raise it here is because the first person who cited this bird uh, was just a citizen of, uh, Westmoreland County. And she was out walking her dog. And typically what happens when we get birds is it's a result of one of our neighbors calling Mary and then Mary finding which one of us can go out there and get the bird and, you know, take it to the nearest rehabber. We've got a different issue with this, um, be- because of the danger of contracting avian flu. So the only reason I come up here is to, uh, get the town manager to get in touch with Mary and come up with a way of alerting our citizens without creating a panic as it relates to these birds. You know, we're still willing to be the contact person. Uh, we're now aware of, um, who is responsible. DWR is responsible now for, for picking up these birds and, and disposing of them. You know, there's issues of euthanizing these birds, of which there's federal, federal laws and state laws that govern the euthanization of birds. And so, uh, but it's going to be real important for our neighbors to understand that when you call Mary, don't go near the bird. The bird is acting weird. Right? And, and you're going to see that. And, um, and this, these, this avian flu can be transmitted through the fecal matter that these birds leave on our beaches. So, you know, there's a lot, a lot of things to take into consideration here, uh, for, for our neighbors to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I want to make sure that Mary Wenz gets props for this because there was no protocol and you know how stubborn Mary can be.
We appreciate all of her efforts very much. Chief, will you get also with the town managers so that any safety protocols, because you guys are going to get a call if Mary doesn't get it, the PD may get a call. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Long. Nigel Long.
Welcome, Mr. Long.
When I get there, I apologize. I was hoping this, I was hoping to save you from hearing from me, but there, there were some things I heard this evening. Um, Nigel Long, one one five Lynn Haven Court. Um, welcome to the new council members, to all of you. I, I made some notes on some things that we heard this evening. There may be questions that as, as town council members, you may want to follow up with staff, particularly as you get into the budget season. Um, first thing was a little bit concerning, we are at forty five, forty eight, forty something percent of, uh, water and sewer, um, income coming in at the end of the second quarter. Well, that sounds surprising because the, it's a, it's a multiplier of the number of households and the, you know, the rate that we charge them. So you may want, as you get into the budget process, you may want to consider what the implications of that are for the, for the town and those funds. Um, that's two funds. I'm going to get back on my hobby horse and say that, um, the trash fund, uh, which we instituted eighteen months ago, uh, we still don't have any information on that. Um, and how that's working out, how the trash fund can repay those ARPA funds that were spent to buy the, um, uh, toters. Um, and particularly with the expenditures coming up, uh, on a new trash truck, which is in the CIP. Um, but it isn't identified as being paid for out of the, uh, trash fund, because there isn't a trash fund. Um, I, I just think that's an area you will want to dig into as you get into your, your budget season. One, one of the things in the CIP, uh, that was said at the planning commission meeting, which confused me slightly, maybe I can understand it, is that all this work on the wastewater treatment plant doesn't get identified in the CIP because it's maintenance. Well, yes, it's maintenance that should have been done years ago. Feels to me personally as though it's a, um, you know, major item of capital expenditure that you're going to need to, to, uh, allocate funds for. And so it just surprises me that, uh, it's, it's, it's not included there. Then finally on sidewalks, obviously we heard, you heard from the town manager about what's happening in the coming years based on a, a lawsuit that, um, an individual or some individuals filed with the town, um, or against the town. What I thought you may want to consider is whether that, all those areas are really the most important places to fix sidewalks. Um, how you're dealing with the ownership issues that relate to sidewalks and the ADA issues, um, associated with that. Um, and maybe you should consider asking your staff to get out ahead of this so that you have a list of what you're going to do prioritized for, and it may be five, 10 years' time, maybe part of the, um, uh, the comprehensive plan that will be revised in twenty twenty six. But so that you have something out there and you're not just being reactive to lawsuits and you're actually planning for what happens to the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Okay, just to make sure if there's anybody else that would like an opportunity. Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. I'm just going to take a, a five minute recess, ten minutes. We'll reconvene at eight o'clock, okay? A little recess, so. I have a break.
Go down and reconvene. Actually, hold on one second. We'll reconvene and I will look at my phone for an official time, eight o'clock. All right, next up is the election of vice mayor. Is there a nomination for vice mayor? Yes, Mr. Wood?
Yes, I'd like to nominate the president vice mayor. Kenny Allison, I think Kenny has shown outstanding leadership over the past nine years. I think it would be a great thing if it continued.
Okay, are there any other nominations for vice mayor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Are there any dates? Okay. Ladies on assignments, and others are so excited. Um, okay. Trying to match people up to some exciting opportunities coming forward. Um, Ms. Grand South, economic development, which I think will highlight on your healthcare. Um, Sanford, Parks and Recreation. Um, Allison, Public Works. Uh, Williams, School Board. Larson, Finance and NGOs. And Wood, Public Safety and Planning. And I'll be Administration. Um, and um, I was the Economic Development Director, so I'll uh, transfer over B D C stuff. Okay? Next up is the establishment of the council meeting schedule. Go to your tab A in your book. Um, every year when we set this up, it's the first and third Wednesdays of the month, but there are a couple of um, calendar conflicts or things, suggestions maybe about the upcoming year to discuss. Think on the resolution, it says a Thursday of June eighteen, but that is a Wednesday. Yeah, because it was last year, we had to move the meeting, I think because the Juneteenth holiday. So that is actually Wednesday this year and does not conflict with the holiday. Um, but I wanted to bring up for discussion a couple of dates. The March nineteenth meeting is um, spring break for the school system and um, I know several people will be taking vacations with their kids that week, so uh, combining the March meetings to have a regular work session together on the fifth for that month. Is there any discussion on that? How do we feel about that? Okay. Uh, the nineteenth, the Wednesday, the nineteenth, canceling that meeting to combine it with the March fifth date. That way there'll be just one meeting in March on the work session date. And then the other two dates that have come up in the past um, that we've done consolidation is around the July fourth holiday. Um, which is a very busy time for the town and the departments. Canceling that July second uh, work session to combine it with just the July sixteenth date. Um, kind of gives everybody the ability to focus on all the activities that are going on around that holiday. Um, and it's also after the budget's been approved, so it's a little bit of a breather to uh, to have this on the regular meeting day.
Give us time to heal.
Give us time to heal, yeah. And then the last one um, that's uh, been done is the Labor Day holiday, same deal for the same reasons. That Wednesday's um, September third work session. Combining that to the regular meetings, so that's just the September seventeenth meeting on um, in that month because Labor Day is that Monday before. So those are some proposed adjustments to the town meeting schedule. Can I go ahead and make a motion on the uh, adjustments in the third second? Okay? Any discussion on that or any other dates that people see as potential conflict or want to change out? Okay? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 Excellent. Okay, so Heather, did you get the three changes? March, July, September. Oh, and the Thursday is a Wednesday. Yeah. Thank you. Heather, you got it all straight though, right? Okay, yeah, and this last year, the January month felt really weird with New Year's on a Wednesday, but this next year in twenty twenty six, it doesn't. So I think we've given those like they are. All right, next up is uh, Resolution two twenty five, the twenty twenty five bylaws and rules of procedure. We have some recommendations from our town attorney on some adjustments to the bylaws. Do you want to read us into that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh. The first change I'm recommending, every year we adopt bylaws, which are internal documents. You aren't required to have bylaws as councils, but the council has chosen every year to have a set of bylaws. I did notice with the liaisons that there was an issue that felt like could cause confusion in the future of the Board of Zoning Appeals is a quasi judicial body. That on recommendation of council is appointed by the circuit court judge. Uh, so it's unlike anything else that's involved with a liaison. Uh, their rulings are subject to review as we all know by a circuit court judge. Uh, so I, I was concerned that you have a liaison through the B C A. The liaison is going to, is confusing because liaison thinks well, actually be participating. But if the liaison participates in a meeting, then it may call into question the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Because you had an outsider participating in the discussions and questioning. So my first change is to strike the Board of Zoning Appeals as part of the liaison. Um, the second suggestion is regarding work sessions, you, you set forth an agenda for the coming year. And unlike regular council meetings, work sessions aren't always necessary. Uh, so I set out a procedure for if there's nothing on the work session or if the town manager, mayor determine that there's just an item or two, as there was recently on a work session, that can easily be addressed at the next council meeting. As was the case tonight, uh, the mayor and town manager have the authority, the council that made, I think it was implied earlier, but I wanted to make it specific. Or at least give you all the opportunity to make it specific. So those are the two suggested changes.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, the cancellation. I personally don't like being blindsided, like somebody said, hey, your meeting's canceled. I'm like, really? It was? You know, like citizens are being notified for myself. Is there a way that council can be um, notified or polled in advance? Obviously, you would have some sort of indication if you thought there was only two items on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Wood?
Uh, I actually agree with Mr. Williams on this. If there's going to be, my thoughts would be if there's going to be a cancellation. What's, what's the parallel time? Your opinion, week?
Yeah, I mean, this last cancellation was snow driven and weather driven. I thought there was already a provision for cancellations in that regard.
There's a provision about the, I believe the mayor and the town manager set the agenda. So I interpreted that to mean that by setting the agenda, it gives you some leeway to move an agenda item from a work session to regular.
Sure, I mean, obviously that was a safety concern, you know, people coming out in the middle of a snowstorm. Um.
But that's a different issue.
Yeah, and we did, I did ca- uh, contact all council members regarding the cancellation of, of that meeting.
Yeah.
So we'll just make that protocol going forward.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Okay.
Okay, well, Mr. Williams, I mean, sorry. What Rick was asking for was uh, what, what's the minimum amount of notice?
I mean, that one was within twenty four hours because we didn't know, you know, how serious it was gonna be.
As standard.
Outside work.
Yeah.
Of emergency. Right, right.
Sure. Yeah, generally, if we're gonna cancel a work session, I mean, at this point, we've consolidated some meetings in the calendar. I'm not, I don't know. We're probably gonna beat all these meetings. So, we might be.
Forty eight, does that sound good?
Yeah, forty eight seems good. Do you want to put a forty eight hour notice on anything unless it's uh, weather related or, or crisis related? I mean, certainly in COVID, we had some very interesting situations that came up and had to be electronically all of a sudden or, or cancel meetings. Stuff like that, so.
So forty eight hours for non-emergency cancellations.
Sure.
Yeah.
So that we, we.
You put that, okay.
Is everybody else good with it?
Yes, that's good.
Okay. All right, is there a motion for the bylaws? Or do you?
So moved.
And let's go to second one, continue discussing. Okay.
I was just gonna say, I agree with the B C A. I do think that, you know, anytime a council member wants to attend any meeting, they can, so more than welcome the audience. When, when I was liaison for Board of Zoning Appeals, I very rarely said anything, which sounds like was the right move anyway. And I kind of keep that practice for most meetings. I, I feel like we're kind of objective observers when we're like planning commission or unless they have questions specifically from the council member, like, so I, I agree with the change.
Yeah, I'm proposing with the changes from the attorney. That's the motion. All right, and if there's no further discussion, all in favor of bylaws?
Uh, we.
Oh, wait, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I did have one more thing I wanted to mention. Um, the, I know we had a lengthy discussion at the um, strategic planning meeting, but most citizens aren't gonna be privy to that information unless Heather's got the audio out. I think still working on that. It's still, still in the works, but one of the, my things I've always wanted to discuss was committees, and I know there's really, from what I gathered, there's maybe a little bit of support, but not a, a lot of support. Um, just so citizens understand, I've been kind of pushing for committees for a long time because I feel like there, like Mr. Knuckles said, there's some very big things that need to be addressed in this town. Finance, one of them, um, infrastructure, another one. And so I just would like, especially the new members, um, just to kind of keep an open mind, maybe going down the road, we can introduce this again at some point. Um, consider having at least ad hoc committees to start with. Um, and then maybe next year, address this again, see how you all feel after you've had a year of being liaison, if you feel the same, that you want to keep that versus having committees.
That was exactly my response to Mr. Knuckles, like, you know, let's, let us understand status quo first, you know, the new members I'm referring to. And then, once we have some experience, we might have a more informed opinion.
Well, actually, the members are, the Colonial Beach have chosen wisely as well, and I trust. Sorry. I said the citizens of Colonial Beach have chosen wisely as well, so I think we can entrust them to make up their own minds. But they've had a year to observe the B, liaisons themselves, so I think that points to suit us.
Sure, and like I said at the meeting, I would encourage uh, members to talk to um, other local officials, uh, when you go to the B M L conference about um, committees and the uh, pros and cons of that, if they're making committee meetings, if their meetings actually happen, if they're able to record the meetings, advertise the meetings, who staffs the meetings. Um, those kinds of logistics and uh, you know, especially talk to small towns. And um, and how those work with small towns, so you get some input. Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor of bylaws with the amendments to the attorney and the clarification of forty eight hour notice?
Aye. Aye.
All right, next up. Resolution three twenty five, an appointment to the planning commission and yes.
I have a nomination, Madam Mayor. Um, I'd like to nominate Nigel Long. Nigel has come to every meeting that I can remember since I've been at the council. Uh, he has proven that he has the town best interest at heart. He's worked diligently. Uh, he's always, so he's fully helps and suggests. But they're always well reasoned, well thought out, and I think he'd make an outstanding addition uh, to the planning commission.
Okay, so that's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion we can discuss?
A second.
Aye. Uh, is there further discussion? Yes, Mr. Williams?
Yes, um, as the planning commission liaison, I was at that last meeting. Um, I know, I know Miss Luna had to leave early, um, with Mr. Knuckles, or not Mr. Knuckles, uh, Mr. Hutchins was there, um, so I asked him for clarification because I swear there was zero discussion on this. I even had to go back to the original agenda to see it, and, and sure enough, it was in writing that they changed from their fifteen year plus tradition of vetting the candidate first and then sending it on to the council. Um, and there was zero discussion. It was not mentioned. I mean, I'm shocked when, when the town attorney said that was changed. I'm kind of curious who actually suggested that change and why. It seemed like the planning commission giving up one of their rights to appoint new member, at least recommend new members. Seems kind of crazy that they, there would not be one single word at their meeting about that, so was it snuck in on them? I don't understand.
I'm gonna let the town attorney respond.
Uh, I have it in front of me. It, what it said before was any vacancy of membership shall be filled by recommendation of the commission. And then these are two words that concern the informal appointment uh, by the town council, as if the, the town council were just rubber stamping that. The Virginia Code provides this responsibility of the town council to appoint members of the planning commission. Uh, I put it in the comment in the margin, so this was highlighted in red. I, I changed it by, to say, any vacancy of membership shall be filled by appointment by the town council. Highlighted in red was this, that was highlighted red, I had a comment on the margin. This language uh, brings us in sync with session so and so with the Virginia Code. So it was right there, and the planning commission voted on the, the bylaws and.
I was on the commission when um, this got changed. It was the practice that the council appointed, solely appointed commissioners um, forever. I, the planning commission never um, did that. And um, and, and it was requested by the commission when I, well, I was the one that requested it. Um, and, but I don't think it was ever brought up, the state code uh, conformance concerns. Probably at the time would be my guess because the planning commission wasn't really paid a lot of attention to by the attorney, by the town attorney. She didn't attend our meetings, she didn't check our bylaws, she was not, um, and the planning commission's bylaws, kind of like our bylaws are informal in the sense that they're not a mandated requirement. There's no like judicial, you know, law related to them, they're just uh, you know, formality to conduct business. And so, um, anyway, I just say you have some background on the issue. Um, I also asked for term limits when I was back then on the planning commission.
Are you saying that for, when you were on there, you guys changed it? Because I heard it went back fifteen years.
Well, it's been fifteen years.
Oh, it's been that long?
That's the whole time now. Uh, yes, darling.
Madam Mayor, I, I apologize, but I wanted to add on to um, what the town attorney had said to you. And that is that the um, I didn't want it to, for you to think that the planning commission, you know, got this document and, you know, their last meeting, you know, a few days prior to the meeting to review it. The bylaws always require that the group that are considering the bylaws have the bylaws in hand for at least thirty days prior to their discussion and consideration of them at their meeting, which is happened in this case. They received the bylaws at their December meeting, which included all of these same changes. And then we opened up the floor for discussion at the commission's January meeting. There were no questions about any of the comments in or changes in the bylaws.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Just to make sure we stay focused on the task at hand. Okay, oh, yes, Mr. Williams.
I just wanted to mention, I, I understand what Miss Oden was saying, but it's, I guess, just a recommendation. It would be good practice since we did this for our meeting, you went line by line with the changes, especially any major changes you've been explaining to us. I didn't see that, that meaning, so that might have been helpful, so maybe myself and Mr. Hutchins wouldn't be surprised and Miss Luna too. Because there's a lot of little things that can slip through sometimes. Um, yeah, I, I don't even have the uh, applications in front of me. Do we have the applications or a list of the people or anything?
They were emailed to us um, three weeks ago, and then there was an application that came in today.
I just wondered whether, either it's basically blank except for the resolution.
She did not print out all the applications. No, there were three.
Do we have the applicants here to speak so we can interview them?
We can do that, but we have a motion on the floor right now. Would you like to invite Mr. Long since he's involved in the motion of?
Well, I'd like the, the applicants, I mean, we're, we're actually nominating somebody to be on the planning commission, which is huge deal in this town as far as the power that they have.
Mr. Wood?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um, we've had the application, other than the applications came yesterday. There is a motion on the floor that's been seconded for a vote. I would say we get on it.
Okay.
So we shouldn't talk to the candidates. Is anybody else? Um, I'd like to make a motion that we interview all the candidates.
Then we have a current motion on the floor, and unless you're amending that motion um, to postpone the current motion, then you can't, you can't supersede it with just another outside motion. So we can vote on this. If it fails, we can, we can go to the next step.
Well, um, who are the three names? Can you remind us at least of who the three people are?
Nigel Long, Linda Brubaker, and Laura, Lauren Adams.
We have it in the mic, please, we can't hear.
Lauren Adams, Nigel Long, Linda Brubaker, are all three here? Raise your hand if you're here. Okay, thank you, and Crystal Wood.
Lauren sent something in that she needed, if, but she wasn't able to make it, so she sent something in to be aware.
Okay.
If needed.
Maybe, okay.
Well, I just, I do, I did look at the applications, um, and I s- see the extensive background of, of Ms. Adams with the, especially, uh, with the engineering degree and, um, a really solid background in construction, um, so I would like to nominate her.
Okay, we have a nomination on the, we have a motion on the floor, so we have to do that motion first, and then we can.
We can't put multiple choices out there for people?
There's a nomination on the floor, it's been seconded.
Yeah, you do one motion at a time, that would be a separate motion after this motion.
Okay, so, since we've had so much discussion back and forth, can we repeat what the motion said, that we can go from there?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The motion was for Nigel Long, membership in the land commission.
The motion is an appointment for Nigel Long.
Okay, point of order, question?
My second, yes, Mr. Wood?
Yes, um, I'm not sure if this is different, um, but I'd just like to ask the town attorney, um, for nomination for chairs and stuff like that, you, you can vote on multiple people at one time. So one person can nominate, one person and another can nominate, is that, is that not a procedure for this?
There's a nomination for and a second. Sometimes the chair will open it up for nominations, which will allow more person to be nominated. And then there can be, as long as there's a second for each person, then I could proceed.
Okay.
But that's another way to do it.
So we can have multiple on the floor, and then make one vote, and then make the next vote, and then make the next vote, if that's necessary?
Or you could, you could just, we're forward, the planning commission where you, the nominations, and.
Yes.
Just call for a vote.
Of one or the other?
Right, right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I haven't done it that way before, okay.
Uh, like, uh, this happens.
Okay. All right, is there any further discussion? Oh, yeah, okay. All right, is there any other nominations? Okay. Here, and then, uh, we will go for, uh, one or the other, that way.
Can we hear the letter from?
Okay, we put the letter on the post.
Yeah, at least your mom would like to speak.
Right.
Ms. Lauren Adams wrote in, good evening, members of the town council. My name is Lauren Adams, and I've had the pleasure of living in our town for the past two years and three months. I regret that I am unable to present at this meeting, to be present at this meeting, but I wanted to express my interest in serving on the planning commission. I believe in Colonial Beach's unique charm and responsible, well-managed growth, and I would be proud to contribute to that vision. With ten years of experience in the construction industry, my background includes work on highways, bridges, commercial, senior living, family, and municipal projects. I have extensive experience in plan and specification reading, comprehensive budgeting, construction standards, and navigating the regulatory frameworks that guide both public and private developments. This past year, I have started attending the zoning board of appeals meetings to voice the opinions and thoughts on different things that have come up on Ninth Street where I live. On changes with the zoning language, that is what got me excited about the planning commission and its work. As a resident of this town, I would be grateful for the opportunity to help guide our homes in a way that serves the best interest of all who live here. Thank you, Lauren.
Okay, I want to call Mr. Long, impromptu.
Not much here for me, sad.
So, in fairness to the other candidate, maybe I should just read out what I, uh, submitted on my application form. I think that would be the, 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 the first thing to do to help you make a, a good decision. Um, as an experienced business leader, I bring the necessary financial skills and history of consensus-building leadership to protect the heritage of Colonial Beach and ensure that controlled growth enables the town to improve the infrastructure and services for all residents. As treasurer of a local homeowners association, I've gained a good understanding of the needs of our residents over the past three years. My business experience as CEO of a company will ensure that I can provide effective input to town council, a capital improvement program process. The town's comprehensive plan was last approved in twenty twenty-one and should be updated during the term with the current vacancy. The work on this will be fundamental in providing guidance to where the town should be in the following ten-plus years. I believe my interactions with both residents and local businesses over the last year has enabled me to understand their priorities, and I look forward to bringing that experience to this review process. I've attended many planning commission things and almost all town council meetings since early twenty twenty-three, and spent time at the town council annual retreats to get a full understanding of their planning priorities. I'm independent of any external financing or group influences and will impartially represent the interests of residents. Uh, there are multiple groups that have interests in the town's planning process, current residents, future residents, local businesses, landowners, developers, et cetera. I'm experiencing consensus building and imbalancing needs of multiple communities to ensure their long-term interests are fully understood and evaluated. In all the decisions I would become responsible for, I will take into account the long-term needs of our community so that the needs of both current and future residents are protected. Happy to do my resume or anything else you want to hear, but I'm sure you don't want to hear it. Is there anything else you want me to go through?
Is there anything else? Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Long. Um, okay. Uh, well, start on, is that okay if I start with you, Grand Sam? Call for a vote, sure?
Two.
The choice is, uh, Lauren Adams or Nigel Long, and I believe I'm doing a choice selection. Yeah, sorry, this is, uh, oddity, this isn't, uh.
Um, in studying Lauren's, um, background and reading her application, I, I'm the one.
Okay, how do you vote? Let me sample.
Um, it's a very tough choice between two candidates, I think they're both very qualified, uh, I would have to say one.
What? Uh, more, sorry, Ms. Adams, yes. Mr. Anderson?
I'll go with, uh, Nigel Long.
Hi, Mr. Wood?
Nigel.
Mr. Long.
Hi, Mr. Williams?
Lauren Adams.
Oh, man, you guys are making this stuff on me tonight. Um, I think both candidates are excellent. Um, I read her resume, it's very impressive, I'm excited that she wants to get involved in the town. I'm gonna vote for Mr. Long, uh, because of his, uh, no pun intended, long-term commitment. He just showed an exceptional and extraordinary dedication to following the council and the planning commission and the issues, and, um, I just, uh, think he'll provide a great perspective. I would say, though, to Ms. Adams, to please, their vacancies come up again, I'm not sure when the next expiration is, to, to resubmit the application, please encourage her to do so, I think she would be an excellent candidate as well, and there will be future opportunities. Is there?
Those opinions, I'll stop coming until I'm after mine.
Now.
Yeah.
How'd you know that's what I was just trying to do? All right, next up is the, uh, residency plan, um, and Ms. Tucker, would you like to read us into it? And I think our Berkeley group is online because of a snowstorm in, in Asheville, North Carolina.
Hey, everybody.
Going to, um, delegate the reading end of this presentation to Ms. Darla.
Oh, I apologize, Darla.
She has prepared a wonderful intro for, um, Kate.
Um, I'm gonna speak from here, if everybody can hear me okay, can y'all hear me okay? Um, so, the next item for your consideration is the, um, approval of the propelling resilience.
Give me a mic or upset of the people who are watching in here.
You wanna get a mic?
I will.
Laurel Heathers. Okay, I'll come up to the podium, yeah. Heather, when we get the new mics, we get extra one for Darla.
Uh, thank you. Um, so the next item for your consideration is approval of the plan, the propelling resilience, integrating flood and stormwater management in Colonial Beach, this is a final draft of the report that's been presented to you. The final draft of the report's been online, um, since last week, uh, wanted to let you all know that, but it was put online, one, it was made available to you as a final draft, and so, um, it's been there since last week. Um, tonight, you're going to hear from, virtually, from, um, Kate Jones, who is a deputy director of community development with Berkeley Group. She is, um, participating remotely because, um, you know, she is enjoying right now two of my favorite things, the beach, because she lives in the Outer Banks in North Carolina, and snow, and they got a lot of snow, so she was not safe for her travel, we were seeing. So I am a little bit jealous because I've always wanted to be at the beach when it snowed. Um, anyway, she's gonna present this to you, um, you know, the town obtained a grant, um, to fund the, uh, develop a strategy, a comprehensive strategy to address the challenges that the town faces with increasing threats from environmental changes, including flooding events, in addition to stormwater infrastructure and rising sea levels. Um, the Berkeley Group prepared the plan, they've been working with the town, they've been working with citizens and stakeholders through various, uh, public input sessions over, um, of the last couple of years, I guess, um, eighteen months, couple of, two years, um, and so, there's been a lot of involvement, and I know that, you know, in hearing some of the discussions that the group has, and I know from a staff standpoint, really appreciate all the input that we receive from citizens, um, on this at the various points. Um, Kate is gonna talk about, um, the changes that have been made, uh, to what was an initial draft, final draft, if you will, and then there were additional changes made after, um, the public comment period, the last public comment period. And she's gonna talk about some of those changes, and I wanted to note for you that the, um, there was a mention tonight about a map being incorrect in the plan, the map in the plan is not a zoning map. The map in the plan is the future land use plan map, so if it was compared to a zoning map, obviously, there would be discrepancies because the thing doesn't follow the same, it was not the same map as the future land use plan map. So the map that is in the, in the plan is correct, and, um, Kate and I, either one can answer any questions once she's finished. Thank you, Kate.
All right, thank you, Darla, and, um, I wanted to say good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and, uh, council members. It's great to be with you, and again, I'm really sorry that I was not able to be there in person. Um, however, we are, we are pretty snow-packed here in the Outer Banks. I'm going to, um, go ahead and share my screen and make sure that everyone can see it just fine, so bear with me one second. All right. All right. All right. Now, can everyone see my screen? Can you see, um, the first slide in the presentation, should say propelling resilience?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, fabulous, it's wonderful when tech actually, um, does work. So again, thank you for, for having, um, having me in tonight virtually. I want to introduce the final draft of the, um, propelling resilience, Town of Colonial Beach Flood Resilience and Stormwater Management Plan. Um, tonight, I have a presentation prepared for you all that will kind of hit the highlights. Um, I did want to say that, um, you know, I'm open to, of course, if you have questions along the way and would like to just kind of, um, stop me and ask questions, I'm completely fine with that. Um, I'll leave it up to kind of you all, um, or we can hold them till the end. I'm fine either way, so I'll let you all kind of take the lead on how, how you'd rather proceed with your questions.
Just for the digital, um, analogy purposes, I think we should wait for questions to the end.
Of course, okay, that works for me, thanks for clarification. So, as you all may know, um, the Town of Colonial Beach, um, is vulnerable, and I know that you, you do know because you live there and you work there and you spend your time there to frequent and severe flooding events. Um, the purpose of this plan is to, it's, it's really multi, you know, multipurposed, to identify frequent and severe flooding issues, um, and these issues, for the most part, are intensified by, um, future conditions such as sea level rise, um, and, um, climate change. What this plan, I think a key aspect of this plan does is it prioritizes actions and projects very clearly. And we'll talk about that a little more in a minute, but the, the outcomes, um, were also, um, you know, prioritized by a matrix, and we also received a lot of public input along the way, and we'll talk more about that as well. And there has been some talk about Virginia, um, Community Flood Preparedness Fund, a very important and, and timely discussion. I know you all have been preparing a grant application, um, this resilience plan, um, CFPF, uh, you know, in order to approve grant applications for specific projects, it is a requirement that you have an approved, uh, resilience plan. So, I will, I think it's always important, and throughout this process, um, we were made aware of a lot of really great work that's been done in Colonial Beach already. Um, I think, uh, you know, working in a lot of communities, um, it's, it's really unique. There are quite a few studies, and I know your, your commission and your council are also very active in many of these. Um, so just listing a few of them here, um, the R A F study that was initiated by, um, U V A and others in twenty twenty. There was also, um, I think out of the U V A Architecture School, a Framework for Coastal Flood Planning, which is a, a great document. Um, the I N I analysis report that Duberry completed, um, very important report as well, we wanted to make sure that was referenced in here. We'll talk a little more about that in a minute. Shoreline Change Analysis of an Austrian Recreational Beach, um, that was done, uh, O D U in twenty twenty-three. And there is a list of other, other work also, you know, more detailed than the plan. All right, so, for the most part, and this, this plan is really set up into two sections. So, I'll briefly explain this, the first part is the high level, if you will, kind of bird's eye view of flood resilience, um, in the town. And then the second part is a little more detailed analysis going into specific project prioritization areas um, that can then be, um, carried out for grant applications. So, think of part one as this kind of overview of looking what's been done already, talking about, um, high-level actions, um, that the town can take. Two is digging a little more deeper into the prioritized project areas, and, uh, well, we're gonna talk about both. So first part we're gonna talk about is part one. And I do want to mention, because it is really the impetus, you know, the main impetus for doing this type of resilience plan is to meet the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation's criteria for what they look for in a flood resilience plan. And I have the criteria actually laid out on the next two slides, but generally, they want to see localized information, they want to see prioritized actions, and they want to see timelines for implementation. And specifically, if you were to. And specifically, if you were to read their, um, documents, they, they have nine criteria, um, for your particular, um, manual that you were awarded funding for, for this flood resilience plan. I won't, you know, explain these too much, but I, I think it is important for, for me to list them out just so you're aware of kind of, um, what, what they wanna see in these plans. They wanna see that, um, number one, the plan addresses flood hazards. Number two, they specifically ask for the incorporation of, in consideration of climate change. So really, they wanna see that you're thinking about it, um, that you acknowledging, um, you know, there are good data sets out there now. Um, they may not be very, um, specific, um, to your, you know, to your community, but there are data sets out there that speak to future changes. Number three, focus on nature-based solutions. You may have heard these words before, but they want to see, um, a preference given to projects and strategies that utilize, um, sort of more of a, uh, a green or ecological, uh, solution. It doesn't mean it has to be all, all that way, it can be hybrid. And it just means that you should have, um, you know, given some thought and preference to, you know, things like living shorelines, um, wetland restoration, things like that. Equity considerations, the plan must demonstrate that you have looked at, um, disadvantaged or underserved communities um, within your town, um, and that you made an effort to engage diverse stakeholders in your planning process. And then again, five, that you've, that you've identified and, and thought about critical infrastructure. Number six, documenting what public and stakeholder engagement happened and, and what were the outcomes. Seven, prioritizing actions. Eight, integration with other planning efforts. And nine, implementation and funding strategies. So I just wanted to kind of give you, um, an update of kind of what they're looking for. And we'll talk about, um, DCR a little more and later in the presentation as well. So with that, uh, I thought it would be important to talk about the public engagement points that occurred throughout the process of, of this plan. Um, some of these, I will say, predate my time at Berkeley Group. Um, but I do know that, um, you know, there was a kind of varied effort made, and then I was involved in everything after the first public forum. So, um, there was an online public survey that was out for about four months live. And the chart at the bottom, again, I, I know it's probably hard for you all to read, but the chart at the bottom, um, just kind of talks about the respondents. There were a hundred and ninety-two respondents to the public survey. And then it kind of break down of, you know, resident versus non-resident property owner versus business owner. Um, there was a public forum in the summer of 2023. Um, there were a series of stakeholder interviews that occurred probably from, uh, probably of six, six month, maybe a little more than that period, um, in 2024 and end of 2023. The second public forum was this fall in 2024. We had a great, um, turnout, so thank you for everyone that, that did show up. And we were able to get a lot of, of really constructive feedback and incorporate a lot of that feedback into the plan. And then after that, the plan was available online for about five weeks. And that, um, public comment period closed on December sixth. Through some of that public comment, and I wanted to show you all this map for a couple of reasons. One, you're seeing a map, um, that's kind of got two shades, two different colors of, I'd say pinkish beige and red dots, um, overlaid on roads. The red dots are areas, um, the public has identified as flooding hotspots throughout the town. So these are mapped. The, um, because, the difference in the colors, um, and really the main, the main reason they are colored is to let you know that, um, according to the Virginia Community Flood Preparedness Fund, um, the town would be, um, able to have a reduced match amount for future grant applications because of the fact of, um, your area meeting income is, is meeting the requirements of what the CFPF calls a low-income geographic area. So, um, I just wanted to let you know that, that darker color is a higher percentage of, of vulnerability, looking mainly at income here. Um, which, so moving forward, and this is important for your, your CFPF grant applications, you're eligible for a lower match. Um, so just wanted to, to point that out. So in this first effort, um, we worked with, um, town staff, town council, planning commission, and the public to identify areas of flooding. Of course, um, there were a lot of, of red dots on that map, and I think that emphasizes that there are a lot of issues. Um, these were taken and aggregated, and then, um, priority areas were, um, were identified. And that prioritization process and matrix is in the plan, um, just for your information. But these were the, the priority areas that came out of that, um, you know, further kind of evaluation. Um, these are in the report, and, um, I won't read them all, but there is, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Um, these will also, um, you know, in the part two of the, um, plan, you will see that three of these were taken and, um, studied a bit further um, for incorporation in, in grant funding, future grant funding. Um, yeah, so I wanted to point these out. Um, and I'll go ahead and say the ones that were prioritized for further study um, were Virginia Avenue, um, this Dennison Street line here, um, on, on the bayside, and then, um, Potomac River Beach outfalls. And, and, you know, we realize that there are always a lot of, um, opportunities, and it can be hard to, um, to juggle this, that, you know, the prioritization. Um, but the information is there in the report, and hopefully, you know, the second half of the report will guide, guide the town towards implementing some of these solutions. Another really important part that I want to touch on in part one is that there are a lot of actions, um, that the town can look into. We outlined, um, quite a few here, these top four categories. There are financial administrative actions, organizational actions, regulations and ordinance, and high-level infrastructure actions. And, um, again, we prioritize these as well, and they will appear in the back of, um, the back of the first part of the plan. You'll see a prioritization matrix. Um, actually, I think these are actually in the appendant, appendices, in case you're looking for them. Um, but there's a lot of really good actions here. In the top five of these kind of high-level actions, there are also, we created these cut sheets. So these would be, you know, front and back, eight and a half by eleven sheets that could, you know, be pulled out and submitted with a grant application. They could be used for communication purposes. Um, but just a way to kind of look at potential timelines and pots of money, all the good things you need to, um, move some of these things forward. Um, just to give you an example, um, there were some, you know, a potential financial administrative action, um, there would be, let's see, um. So one, one thing would be to, um, join the Community Rating System program to reduce flood insurance premiums. You know, that's just an example of, of, you know, of course, that depends on, on town staff and, and their willingness. It's a, it could be, you know, some of these things could be, um, you know, additional work for staff, uh, but worth considering. And, and, you know, as you grow and, and change in the future, think about the, the, whether or not you may wanna implement some of these things. Okay, and getting into part two, as I said before, this part goes a little, into a little more detail on your stormwater management system. Um, the Stormwater Management Plan addresses deficiencies. Generally speaking, um, I will say, and I just, I wanna be clear about this. Um, back years ago, with the original scope of work, um, we were under the assumption that a full spatial data set of your stormwater inventory existed. And I just wanted to point out that that turned out to be not the case. So, um, there were several points within this, um, plan where the, the scope, we had to be agile, we had to be flexible, and work with town staff to kind of work with what was there. Um, and to make plans for the future for any data gaps that exist. So we want you to be successful. And when, um, you know, you'll see throughout the plan, we've identified, you know, the next steps that need to be taken in order to really get you where you need to be, which is, you know, to really have that full, comprehensive stormwater asset, infrastructure inventory. That's what you really need to run kind of the, the next hydrological modeling. So I just wanted to point that out, um, up, upfront. Um, I think it's pretty clear that a lot of the stormwater system is not adequately designed to handle current or anticipated stormwater volumes. Um, complicating that, your tidal influences from the Potomac River and Monroe Bay complicate system's capacity, um, causing backflow and further reducing stormwater, um, management. So knowing that, um, through community engagement, the town, uh, worked with, with us to identify specific areas with significant flooding issues, and a prioritization process was implemented to select areas for more detailed study. Um, again, this does not mean that the other areas cannot be studied moving forward, but for the purposes of, of this project, in the time we had, these were the three that were chosen. Monroe Bay at Dennison Street, Potomac River Beach Outfalls, and Virginia Avenue. I put a little asterisk there next to Virginia Avenue, and I think this is a, again, kind of a timely point. This area, um, is also located in the North Beach Shoreline Project. And this is the project, um, that you, the town has been working on for this upcoming CFPF grant. It's also located in the Virginia Coastal Resilience Master Plan. Excuse me, there is a, um, a reference to it in that, in that Virginia Coastal Resilience Master Plan, which came out in, in 2021. So this is a important project, obviously speaking, and, and, and really important to tie in. You know, I know we're looking at Virginia Avenue, but we, we wanted to tie it into the bigger picture as well. So, um, our engineering partners did do some field visits along the way and were able to, um, locate some stormwater infrastructure, um, in these areas. And all this data will, is, you know, going to be passed on to the town, so it's yours, and you can, um, have it in perpetuity. Um, but they were able to locate, um, you know, in these areas. You'll see in this map, Virginia Avenue Priority are on the left. You'll see the, um, obviously Dennison kind of running down, um, the middle here, and then the beach outfall priority areas, um, running along here. And the, I don't know, I don't, I know it's probably difficult to see, but the, the outfalls in orange here, you can see. And obviously, you know, these outfalls are, uh, conveyance, uh, from the stormwater system or what should be a functioning stormwater system, uh, into the Potomac. And let's see. So just a moment to talk about Monroe Day, Monroe Bay at Dennison Street. Um, the roads, this is kind of a summary of like the evaluation. The roads in this area slope downward and drainage collects at a low point on the street. This low point floods during storms and tidal events, and then water stands on the roads for several days. The stormwater system along this road lacks the capacity for both stormwater runoff and tidal flooding. So some, uh, priority actions here to, you know, number one, improve the existing stormwater system. So for example, increasing ditch capacity, upsizing stormwater pipes, and also adding a tidal gate, um, to the end of the outfall. And there's, there's just a picture there on the left of, uh, what a tidal gate looks like. You may be familiar with these, um, just a, a device that's installed to the end of the outfall that prevents tides from going back up the pipe, um, which, you know, can exacerbate any stormwater issues. Um, another, um, additive, uh, action here is to retain more stormwater and slow down runoff rates. Um, so the example on the right here in this aerial image, um, there is an area there, um, where it could become a constructed wetland or is a, you know, a type of retention area to retain more water from the roadway during storm events, and then slowly releasing it into the surrounding tidal creek. And that would have water quantity and water quality benefits. So that's an example of, um, a, a potential solution or solutions, I should say, uh, for this area. And we'll get into, there's a, these include cost, um, estimates as well, which I have summed up in just a minute. So for the Potomac, I know this is a lot of words, um, so, um, I won't read the whole thing, but the, for the Potomac River Beach outfall areas, um, you know, the, the outfall pipes are twelve inches. They're quite small. Um, they're not able to handle the, um, volume of stormwater. There are, um, you know, a lot of impervious surfaces tied into those outfalls. Um, there are, um, for example, the outfall under the municipal pier is broken from excessive stormwater flows. The pipe is partially buried in the sand. Um, so there's a lot of scour happening as well. Uh, I know the town has worked to replace sand here, we have it washed away. So there's, there's, this is a very dynamic area, there's a lot happening. Um, and it's definitely gonna require some, um, some further design. However, some ideas here, uh, for potential solutions to start that process. Number one, outfall improvement, upsizing the outfalls to accommodate additional stormwater. So, you know, in, uh, increasing the diameter from, from twelve, adding those tidal gauges to the ends of the outfalls to prevent tidal flow backup. Um, another, um, action that was suggested was to replace the pipe under the municipal pier and actually extend that further into the river underneath that pier. In addition to that, um, and you'll see in some of the images below, adding vegetated dunes and outfall dissipation measures can reduce, well, the dunes can reduce the elevation difference from the pavement to the beach and reduce some of the overland scour that's happening there as, as, you know, stormwater kind of just runs off from the pavement. Um, and then also, um, you know, dissipation measures, kind of, um, and y'all are probably familiar with this, but, um, you know, as the water exits the pipe and it, it really starts to, that velocity really starts to eat away at the sand and any, any, you know, um, anything that's there. Another, um, additive action is adding buyer retention. So thinking back, uh, before things get to the outfall, before the water gets to the outfall, adding buyer retention along roads and parking areas to intercept runoff before it even gets there. So, um, these are some, some kind of high-level ideas. Um, and then, of course, it's always a great idea. I know you all, um, and, you know, you have this beautiful beach there, but if there's a way to incorporate, um, some public access and improvements, um, I know that would go a long way as well. Okay, and Virginia Avenue, um, this portion of, of, um, between, of the avenue between Lincoln and Maryland, um, and the beach, experiences flooding that affects the homes along the road. Um, in our engineer's evaluation, the flooding is caused by undersized stormwater infrastructure and inundation from the Potomac River. Sometimes the river rises onto the end of the street, pushing sand from the beach into the stormwater infrastructure and further limiting the system's capacity. Um, so i- in the plan, you will see, we just, you'll see these maps in the plan, and, and they really speak to problem areas, but just kind of wanted to nail down into, you'll see, there's a lot of boxes around the Virginia Avenue area just showing that, um, observed flooding by town staff, uh, previously identified problem area. It's, it's clearly, you know, a need in the town that was voiced by numerous parties. So, in the plan, you will find some potential solutions, um, and again, cost estimates for improving the existing stormwater system and enhancing the stormwater system. And again, um, the title, um, you know, adding to the end of the outfall, adding the tidal gate is, is one. And here they are, kind of listed out here, upsizing that stormwater pipe and outfall, replacing the inlet on the beach, adding a tidal gate to outfall end to prevent tidal black flow. And then, as possible, um, increasing stormwater retention along Virginia Avenue. And I think this needs to be studied further to see how much room is there and what would be possible, look at the groundwater levels, see what, what could be done along the road there. But there needs to be more, um, conveyance or retention. But there needs to be more um conveyance or retention along that road. And, you know, obviously, you know, with any type of improvement, maintenance is really important moving forward to be able to clear out debris and make sure things are functioning properly. So this is um in the plan as well. It's a recommended stormwater CIP list. And each of these projects are listed here. Um, and there is uh an estimated cost here on the right-hand side. Um there are um the Potomac River, it, as I said before, it's a very dynamic area. So you'll see number two here is broken up into A and B. Um, B needs a little bit of further study before a you know, a really good cost estimate could be determined. Um but you know, three A and three B, I I just wanted to point out as well. Um, three A really focuses on the stormwater improvements and enhancements, kind of separate and apart from three B, which is we're calling, you know, we 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 thought it was really important to make the connection to that North Beach project, so we wanted to call it out here. Um, and this information for three B is actually in the Virginia Coastal Resilience Master Plan. It talks about breakwaters, sand replenishment, shoreline structures, and then moving on to site assessment and preliminary design. So um I think it's really timely to to make sure that um, you know, all of these things are kind of speaking to each other. And as you move forward with the grant application for the North Beach to to really consider what's going on behind the shoreline as well and make sure that um, you know, you're getting, you're getting what you need out of that project. So we're um, we're really happy that um a lot of members of the public and 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 also staff and uh members of of council brought to our attention, again, the INI report. Um, as you know, you know wastewater and you're actively working to improve your wastewater system and and, you know, the INI report certainly identified some potential linkages and and issues with stormwater and the fact that stormwater is increasing your your inflow into your wastewater system. So um, we wanted to make sure that we referenced this report. Um, but also that we added, um, we went into the project matrix and we wanted to make sure that we were adding steps in here. So you could actually see what steps to take to make the linkage to the to the INI issue as well. So for example, in um Action fourteen and part one, you'll see um, there's a there's a reference here to inventory the town of Colonial Beach stormwater infrastructure to better understand flooding issues. This is kind of what I was talking about at the beginning. Um, we made sure to add that, you know, another key action here is to develop watershed and sub watershed hydrology and hydraulic models along with groundwater modeling and river modeling to determine the carrying capacity for your stormwater infrastructure. Um, so that's going to be really important um to really understand, you know, where you can be with your stormwater system, but also you have um, you know, great infrastructure data from the INI report for your wastewater. So if any of any of that information needs to be brought in, it's there. And then with number four, this is just another example, we added a section on sewer and wastewater treatment plant. Um, we we pulled in some action items from the INI plan and and put them in here and made sure that um you know, anything, any assessment of the town's wastewater treatment plant that we're recommending includes, you know, first and foremost, the action items from that plan. Um, so we wanted to make sure to add those. And then also, I think it's important um just to kind of have some overall goals here that were added as well. Um, there were some some manholes identified throughout the plan, the INI plan. Um, and we wanted just to make sure to reference those as well. Um let's see, I think, I think that's about it. I do want to um just talk for a minute about next steps. Um, you know, we're uh hopeful that you all will um, as as Darla mentioned, um, give your approval for this plan. I will say that um, you know, it's i- if you have comments, uh, we'd be happy to still um accept your comments and and wrap those into the draft and um and and, you know, make sure that that we we hear you and and get any of your final comments into the draft. Um, I wanted to point out, you know, that the Virginia CFPF deadline is Friday, which is, which is wonderful. Um, there's also two more grant deadlines coming up in March that um, you know, the town may want to be aware of and look at. One is um, these are both federal pots of money, the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program, otherwise known as BRIC. That deadline is March sixth, and the Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant deadline is also March sixth. These pots of money tend to fund large infrastructure-related projects. They also um love to see that you've already done some previous planning and work to identify projects. So I'm just kind of letting you know as an FYI that 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 these grant applications are are open. Um, and with that, I will um turn it over to you all, uh, council members and see if if you have any questions for me. I'm happy to to help.
Thank you very much for presentation, Kate.
You're welcome.
Documents, so it takes a while to go through everything.
Sure.
I'll open it up to council if there's any questions. Uh, I saw Mr. Wood's hand.
Uh, in regard to the credit application, is that something that?
Can you please use the mic, Mr. Wood?
In regard to the grant applications, is that something?
Um, so we um, I'd have to get back to you on that. Um, just because I don't have our our work order in front of me and um, so I'd have to look into that, but it's certainly, we have helped communities with grant applications in the past, so we certainly have that experience. Um, and uh, if that's something that the town wanted us to do, we can certainly uh, I'd I'd probably defer to uh to uh Natasha and and you all. Um, yeah. But it's certainly something we we've done in the past, and we know how important it would be for the town moving forward. Sort of a non-answer to your question, I know, but I don't have the work order in front of me.
Mr. Williams.
Oh, yeah, just a couple of questions. Um, first off, the Virginia Avenue project.
Yes, sir.
This is kind of the first time I'm hearing it's being referred to as Virginia Avenue project. Uh, what happened to the North Boardwalk or North Beach project, like the point from uh Maryland Avenue up through to Lincoln?
So
there and the sand is really all but gone. Um, those houses are basically, as Rick likes to say, lap, the water's lapping up onto their yards. So what um?
Yeah, um, I I believe that that area, um, and again, I'd want to look at the map, but I believe that area would be included in the overall North Beach, kind of the larger North Beach project um that we've included in the plan. And um, which really takes more of a look at um the shoreline. Um, and, you know, there are certainly um other areas identified in the plan that for stormwater improvements. However, really that shoreline is, and we've identified this in the North Beach project, but also as um another potential need is a full, you know, um, other towns have completed this, but really just focusing on the shoreline, a full, you know, kind of analysis of how to restore your shoreline. Um, and that's, it's hard to do that piecemeal. Um, I, and I think you'll find it in the plan that we've recommended a full shoreline change and a kind of restoration plan would would be the next step to really understanding the um you know, the the fetch there and doing some wave action modeling um would really go a long way to know, understand what type of solutions are going to work and are going to be feasible um for your shoreline.
So the the project that you recommended that you added towards the end is just for Virginia Avenue?
So a lot of the comments we heard throughout um the public forum and then after the public forum were um based on Virginia Avenue, but that area also was identified through public engagement. So we were listening to what we heard from the public. And then we were very specifically, we heard throughout the public forum that everyone really wanted to see that um as a project specifically along Virginia Avenue, and it was also prioritized in the matrix. So all these things kind of added up. Okay, it makes sense, you know, not to say that those other areas aren't important, but um, you know, you have to kind of move forward.
Miss Jones?
Yes.
Go back to one of your prior slot, says that that project does include multiple blocks. It's Virginia to Lincoln all the way to Washington.
Great. Okay. Yeah, I didn't have the map in front of me, so that would be correct. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I I I want to point out, though, that that the shoreline is really something that needs to be studied, and we've tried to identify that is is kind of a more overall project versus the stormwater improvements, if that makes sense.
So the grant that we're looking for, what does that cover?
That's a good question. I'm not, I haven't seen the grant application, so I I can't speak to that.
A lot of residents.
The grant is actually only asking for um permitting and design that doesn't go into the construction on this phase. Uh, there is a second phase um that would address construction.
Oh, but you're permitting, you're talking about from Maryland to Lincoln?
I don't have that information right in front of me at this moment, but I can certainly email that to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Natasha.
But one more question. Um, it was pointed out during public comment tonight that there were some major errors on on the report still. You said that there was, there would be an opportunity still to add or change, make changes. Is that only based on our comments tonight, or is that like you say, in a week or two, somebody has something, at some point, could we, if it's found to be some major errors that they could be corrected still, or is this it? And we vote on it tonight, we're done?
So um, and I and I will, I don't want to speak for staff, but um, the the kind of the the practical procedure here is approval with suggested comments. So if you have comments, we would like to know what they are now. Um, so they can be incorporated with your vote on approval. Um, I'm not aware of any errors. I know um, there was a comment about a zoning map. Um, there is not a zoning map in the plan. There is a future land use map in the plan. It is accurate. It is from your most recent comp plan. So again, if you have, if you know what those errors are, please, let's, let's talk about them now. This is the time to talk about them. So you can approve the plan with the comments suggested. That way you get your plan approved before or concurrent with your grant application on Friday. Um, and I will say that the the plan's been online for um since last Friday. Um, so I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at it yet. I would hope so. Um, but I'm, again, I'm not aware of any errors, and I would ask, yeah, let's, let's talk about this now if if you have them.
Okay, Mr. Allen, who has his hand up?
I was just gonna make reference to the two different plans or two different areas um they were addressing. The North Beach um, she described as being the shoreline um and the other project being, you know, which they're they're kind of connected, you know, the water.
Yeah.
On the street. And then what happens is the water stays on the street long after the storm goes, the rain goes away. It's just not filtering back. I think that's distinction between those two, just to kind of help people understand those those uh two ends are why they're distinct. Um, the other question I had is for the upcoming March sixth
Mm-hmm.
Grants. Certainly help with those particular um items to be, you know, to add value um this this presentation or this document. But is there anything else that we could use in reference to these? For our efforts to get these grants?
I think I heard your comments. Sorry, you broke up a little bit, but I think you were asking if there are other efforts that would kind of add value to your applications. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, certainly. Yes, I think the the volume of work um you know, de- depending on which, you know, obviously what you identify in your grant application, the the body of work you have. Um, I think there's an opportunity to show, you know, the town has really put a lot into planning, and it's time to get some things in the ground. So I would say you certainly have a lot of options. Um, the good thing about um, you know, the the two grants you're referring to, BRIC and FMA, um, they do require, you know, it's for, they're FEMA grants, they require you have an approved hazard mitigation plan. Um, you you know, you check that box, which is great. Um, so you could kind of use, you know, your hazard mitigation plan, the flood resilience plan. Um, and if it's necessary to pull in other efforts, I think it's it's added value. Yeah. That's been my experience with with these grants. They they really want to see that you've you've fought, thought them through. Wish you have. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, I pulled up the plan on the, on the website earlier this week, and I read the whole thing. Um, to be honest with you, verbatim, uh, recite the whole thing. Uh, it was robust. I just want to thank you and your team very much. Um, counter to some of the input we've heard. Um, the value is that this plan provides an enormous wealth of data to the town, and the maps in it are um I thought very valuable. I wanted to make sure that the those, that data and the mapping of that is helpful to our GIS technician.
Mm-hmm.
Are you guys there? The actual, okay.
Yes, yes, definitely. I can work with Natasha and um Darla on that.
Get the shape files over.
Yeah, definitely.
If you're conscious of that. Um, I thought uh um um, smart and interesting to braid um North Beach in the outfall issues, the stormwater issues on uh Virginia, Maryland and Lincoln in a three A, three B like um fashion, because truly they're both are contributing to the massive erosion that's happening in that area. You don't, if you, if you do one and don't do the other, you're not really doing everything you need in that area. You have to do both. And the Virginia Avenue portion of it is um the, and you know, the outfall portion of it that's described in that, which you're calling Virginia Avenue, which is new term for us. I think we have been to Mr. Williams' point, we have been calling the entire problem North Beach.
Okay.
Not really been differentiating the stormwater outfalls which have our part of it from the shoreline. Um, I, we've always been talking about both at the same time in in my opinion. So this kind of is um bringing those two together, which I think is incredibly because we can be going after the North Beach breakwater shoreline with the one fund. And then on these March sixth day, the brick fund go after that and be um possibly you know, tying them together um with multiple funding sources. So um especially when you find a funding source that is specific to stormwater management, which is not going to help you with a breakwater.
Right, that's true. Yeah.
Funding source. Um, difficult to navigate with the shoreline issue because the moon the Virginia, Maryland state boundary and many other complications surrounding that. So this kind of brings out a piece of it that the town can take a little bit more force, you know, uh proactive on um while that breakwater shoreline issue is is so massive to take on, is going to be in the works.
Okay, would it be helpful if I updated some of the um, you you know, maybe just the name of Virginia Avenue, kind of clarify that it it's more than just Virginia Avenue? Just kind of, yeah, I am happy to update that if that makes more sense to you all.
Yes, I think contextually for the community, it is North Beach the stormwater issue and North Beach, the shoreline issue.
Okay.
Both North and, and only talk about North Beach, we're talking about both.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good. Okay, that sounds, that sounds good.
Also tie into, you don't have to do it like right this second.
Okay, no, I won't, I won't. Oh, you guys didn't see my screen, sorry. I was, I wasn't, you were supposed to see that.
Um, but I think that would also pair better, it titled appropriately like that, because with the grant application, rather than the grant trying to pull in you, you are already going to be ready to get the road running. Um, talked about the GIS data, talked about the three A, three B, the titling of that. On the maps and graphics, um, I did have one note that uh, the initial maps and it's like in the executive summary, and then it's also later. Um, you have the, and this would be one to update. You have the Virginia Avenue priority area, which really would be the North Beach priority area, right?
Yeah.
You have each outfall priority areas, which I think are critical. Um, but you do not have the Dennison Street one labeled on that.
Okay.
I do think that all three are the three that you've highlighted in more detail with
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, three million dollars of work there. Um, but anyway, that was, uh, I would just label the third one on that.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. Okay, I can update those maps.
And then I wanted to ensure, um, there's two more things. Uh, one is, you mentioned that where um, be the criteria low income, which I know is a very important criteria for these grant applications. There was um, that had been posed to me once about whether we were high risk or medium risk. You were mapped in the very beginning, rated as both. Um, sort of part of the town as medium, and part as high.
Yeah, um, that's, that's really um so the whole town, uh, the map is a little deceiving. Um, it's a little bit swayed by that um area of your town that really doesn't have a lot of population in it. So the the per capita population there in the west is very low, which kind of skewed the the in the income data and by population, but um based on the numbers, just looking at, we're we're just looking at the whole town of Colonial Beach, your uh the whole municipal boundaries would qualify as a low income geographic area. So so that map really doesn't say one, one area qualifies and one area doesn't. It's just showing there's a little bit of a um there's a little bit of discrepancy in in some some population data there, and that's just
As long as that's clear, um you know, it's the designation of that and how and how that data has been determined. The current evaluation we have right now is at saying, check the box on this question. And I just want to make sure it's
Yeah, yeah, it's it's a really important question.
Your face is down, but I guess you're at the camera. I don't, anyway.
There's a, there's a table in the report that speaks to kind of the you know, what what the CFPF is looking for, eighty percent of state AMI, and it then it lists the town of Colonial Beach's AMI. And so you can clearly see um, that you're you're under that threshold. So it, it um, I try to be really clear about that, explaining it at least in the report.
You have a cute dog back there.
Oh, I do. Oh gosh, you guys can see my
It's okay.
That's her.
And my last question to you was that um, you're confident that this meets all of the criteria for approval that we need um, to use this plan moving forward?
We are, we we did already supply it to the Virginia DCR for preliminary review um, back in December. So they have already seen this plan. Um, and they actually came back with a few comments. Um, actually, it was end of November, December that we incorporated. And so they've already had a chance to see it, comment on it. We addressed their comments. Um, and we feel confident, and in our experience, this is kind of the process that that we like to to use, so there's no surprises. Um, so it's kind of like a preliminary approval um, that we've received from them. It's 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 not an official letter or anything, but it's it's a, yes, I like this, but here are the comments you need to incorporate. So we checked those boxes of incorporating their comments.
Yeah, just question. At our strategic planning meeting last week, um a member had mentioned that they felt that this project only benefited a few homes, like four homes on the North Beach there. In your opinion, does that project benefit more than just a few homes, considering how close all those homes are to the water?
So
In what the impact area is?
I'll, I'll explain. Thank you for speaking. Um, yes, the the North Beach project that's on on the list. Does it, in your opinion, does it benefit more than just four homes?
So, I think there's multiple benefits. I think that my my initial answer is yes. And um, in, and I'm going to change kind of the misleading Virginia Avenue project description, because it really does encompass more than just Virginia Avenue. Um, there are stormwater components to more than just that area. Um, but I would also say that um you know, anytime you're improving stormwater in one area, it's having a positive effect on uh, not only water quantity and quality in the nearby rivers, which is something everyone benefits from. Um, obviously, the the flood reduction benefits would be more localized. Um, but the water quality benefits would would be additive and experienced, you know, by anyone. So, and it's not as if we went into this plan saying we're only working in Virginia Avenue. There's a list of of, you know eight projects, um, which is narrowed down from a list of larger projects that the town can go back and look at. Um, it it doesn't mean that these three priority projects are the only ones, you know, it's it's up to the town. All this information is there for you to make good decisions moving forward. But um, you know I think that that it is true that stormwater improvements have an immediate effect on the surrounding areas. But again, that that North Beach project, not only the shoreline component, which would have a massive effect on the whole northern area of the town, but the Virginia Avenue area, as it's laid out in the description, extends beyond just that immediate you know, just that immediate four homes at the end of the street, if that's what you're referring to. So I would say it goes beyond just those four homes.
I want to make a point of clarification, because that was a really misleading statement about what actually happened at Strategic Action Planning Meeting. And what actually happened was that there are concerns about whether public funds are going to be used on private property to improve pri- property owners on their and that is illegal, and that will not be done. And so I just want to make sure that's clear, that public can only be used with public access and public availability. So as we are applying for these grants, there have been concerns, and this is part of when you did majority of the the questions of the survey out there that was so lowly rated on there. People are worried about funds. People are worried about finances and spending wisely, and they are concerned about a three million dollar shoreline project and how their tax dollars are going to be affected from that. And so that's, I think too, just the fact that when we're asking for these grants, and we're asking for the match requirement to be met, the state in reduction of that because of our risk category, because we have low and uh, income residents, and because we don't meet a high income area. We have a lot of concerns about taking on a project like that, that, you know, without a public buy-in and without public property being at the benefit, the town cannot use public dollars on someone's private property, and that was the point.
Okay.
Clarify that.
Yeah, that's an important point.
All right, so this is the resilience plan. Is there any other comments? Changes? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the plan?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Wood?
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Larson. I'm gonna get the order down better as we get going here. Mr. Larson? How do you vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Hi.
Okay, Ms. Van Damme?
Hi.
Ms. Danberg?
Hi.
Ms. Allison?
Hi.
And I vote aye. There we go, let's go for this grant.
Yep. All right, thank you all so much. Appreciate your time and all the effort that y'all put into this.
Thank you.
All right, take care.
All right, this next item is just an authorization to set the public hearing for the ZTA amendment. That's in our packet, so all we have to do tonight is uh, approve that the public hearing will happen at the uh, February nineteenth meeting. Is there a motion for that? Just the date? Okay, second, second, second by Ms. Danberg. All right, uh, any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, see if they can give us like a quick overview, so that as we're discussing this with citizens, that we can speak and tell us about it.
Another Darla.
I'll speak to it. The background of this is sitting in all these A meetings and producing the packets. I'd noticed that the criteria is the town zoning code for variances was somewhat different than the language contained in the code. And that's because I think the, this section of the zoning ordinance was last reviewed in October two thousand and six. And so it really needed to be updated to be in sync. And what that does is it makes it easier uh, when Marla is preparing a report, and go down the factors, which are the same as codes that are in the that was made by, made purpose of doing that. When I did that, I just went ahead and looked through the whole chapter in the books. And with particular
So most all these changes are directly from Virginia.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the date setting? Say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Excellent. Okay, I will uh, give a short recess, and then we'll be in the closed meeting, so I'm going to read the closed meeting um verbiage now, so that that's the other way. I'm in the Town Council of the Town of Colonial Beach, Virginia, convening closed meeting for the following purposes and discuss the following subjects, all of which are exempt by Virginia law and public media requirements as indicated. Namely, pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty seven eleven eight seven and eight for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation. Where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the town council and the consultation with legal counsel retained by town council regarding specifically legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such legal counsel. And pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash thirty seven eleven eight five with such discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating facilities in the community. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, second, on favor? All right, let's take a All right, let's take a quick break. So back to the topic. That one was pretty good.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion to certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters where identifying the motion by which the supposed meeting was convened were heard discussed or considered in the meeting by council?
So move.
Okay, and each one is ISO certified.
ISO certified.
Get my logo.
ISO certified.
ISO certified.
So certified.
So certified.
Certified.
Nope, ISO certified.
I suppose certified.
I will certify.
I will certify.
ISO certified, and then we'll move into a journal in favor. Um, okay, ten forty two P M. No, I don't think so. Well, let's do it.